Hope everybody's doing well. Patty, would you take the roll call, please?
Mayor Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Marino.
Here, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Protem Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Additions, deletions, or modification?
Yes, sir, you have one. It's...
Resolution forty-five?
Yes, sir.
The Economic Recovery Act, ERA, grant fund in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Can I get a motion in a second to approve that addition?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Announcement and presentation, can we have Dana, Chair of the PGA Corridor, and Noel Martinez, President and CEO of the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce,
Hi, I'm Dana Middleton with Chair of the PGA Corridor Association.
Good evening, Noel Martinez, President and CEO of the Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation on Resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty?
If you will, Mr. Mayor, you received some, a new Resolution forty-five indicating the desires and wishes of the PGA Corridor Association Chamber of Commerce Committee that had put together the Small Business Relief Fund Grant. They're looking for some revisions to that grant to be able to go into what was described as the second wave of funding should the council choose to approve it. Maybe just go over a couple of the things that significant changes to that so that you'll be able to, for the public record, just a few changes.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, as we were reviewing most of the applications that came in, we realized, we realized that there is such a need to help the restaurant and hospitality industry. So, we, the criteria that was put together was, was pretty harsh. And we've come back and we're asking to help the restaurants that really need them. We have over 202 restaurants here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Studies show that thirty percent of them aren't going to make it. You figure thirty, that's sixty restaurants right there, just on that. Sixty restaurants times, let's say, five employees, that's 300 people without jobs. So, our intent here is to save jobs. Dana, you have anything to add?
Yep. So, the new criteria we put together was a little bit different from the original criteria. One of the things that we found was that the restaurant industry, they did receive what it looks like a substantial amount of PPP in the six figures for a lot of the restaurants. But they were forced to use that pretty quickly based on the old criteria within, within a couple of months' time. And so, they kept people on payroll, which was great, but it didn't help because the businesses couldn't open. And so, because they couldn't open, they couldn't, you know, backfill monies they had lost, and so, they couldn't even use the PPP to open and, which didn't happen for several weeks later. So, the main theme was, the consistency that we heard was that we really need some money and we need some help. So, we built criteria based on not only that they had received PPP, we tried to put together some criteria to get some of the restaurants that were kind of medium-sized, that employ anywhere from three to seventy-five people. We have some gross revenue maximums in there as well. And we wanted to make sure they were open and operational. So, we wanted to make sure they were open and operational as of June first, and so that they, we knew they were going to continue to give it a go. And so, the details of the plan are part of Resolution forty-five. And we were going to have this in form of a loan again for up to fifteen thousand dollars. We are asking for pretty much the same criteria that they have to provide a P and L from last year, this year. They need to be a Palm Beach Gardens, obviously, business-based business and have a tax, business tax receipt. And they need, need to show use of funds. And it's not very specific how they use the funds. They can use it for payroll, or for a mortgage, or for lease, or for COVID safety purposes, and, and payroll if they needed to. So, we hope you'll consider this. Are there any questions or anything?
Just don't go anywhere. So, guys, since we've already had the presentation, can I get a council consensus to move Resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty up so we can go to comments from the public and then we can vote on it?
I'll make a motion to move Resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty to now.
Yeah, let's move it up to right now while they're here, and then we can ask, you know, have them a part of our conversation.
Chelsea's second.
Right, so let's bring it back for discussion. Chelsea, do you have any? Okay, Rochelle?
Yeah, I have a question. Dana had, had called it a loan, and I believe it is a grant, not, not a loan, so I think that was just something little. But on, under who is eligible, and the, it's page one of Exhibit A, page two of five of the whole packet, it says physically established in the city of Gardens for the past eighteen months. But on the questionnaire, question number three, it says thirty-six months.
Yep, that's a typo, yep.
Okay, and then also, a minimum of three and no more than seventy-five employees. Question number one says three to fifty. And then question number eight asks again, three to seventy-five. So, there's a double on that one in the application.
And it is, it is, that is a mistake on our part, it is three to seventy-five.
Okay.
So, let's clarify the two errors.
It's three to seventy-five people as employees and eighteen months, not thirty-six.
Okay, so that's good, Rochelle?
And then there's a double on that question. Question one and question eight on there pretty much ask the same question, with the different numbers.
Any other comments or questions? Rochelle?
I just think with, with that number of restaurants in the city that this makes a lot of sense. And our economy depends on them staying viable, and I think it's a good program. I'm impressed by the way it was put together so quickly.
Chelsea?
So, I just wanted to clarify something about the square footage. Can you tell us a little bit about how you came up with that number for any businesses that are curious about it?
Okay, let's see. So, we spent a lot of time talking with various restaurants, and Jody Cross, she is part of the Restaurant Association, Florida Restaurant Association. And we had, the original criteria was based on one employee to twenty-five employees. So, we felt we had targeted pretty well the very small sandwich shops, ice cream shops, and different things like that. So, this actually spread it out to give the larger restaurants more of an opportunity. So, the, the spread of, of that range, twenty-five hundred to sixty-five hundred, is used as a guide because restaurants have different criteria for putting their square footage down. Some include indoor space versus exterior space versus kitchen space, and so, we wanted to be as fair as possible, so that's how we came up with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I just, you know, we always say that there's, there's over ninety restaurants right on PGA Boulevard alone. And what's really important about this is that most, a lot of restaurants are becoming anchors for our retail centers. And if people are afraid to go to the restaurants, they're not going to go to the retail centers. So, this is something that we need to do, not just for our businesses, but also for our residents. It's, you know, one of the services that we provide in our city. So, as with the county where they had two separate, two separate plans for this, I think this is a great step forward for us, and I will vote yes. I think we already did, but I will vote yes again.
Mark?
No, it's a great plan. I just want to go through a couple of logistics, and thanks Rochelle and Chelsea for asking those questions, and Maria. So, we're talking about thirty restaurants at fifteen thousand dollars apiece, which is four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now, we had allocated a million dollars in our Small Business Relief Fund. If my math is correct, we've allocated three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-eighty-five to date. Is that number still accurate? No?
So, it's gone up. So, what happened with the original program, we're still reviewing a couple of applications, and we're backfilling some funds. So, some people needed a little bit more time to put their paperwork in for their budgets and things. So, and also, we guest-bated on thirty restaurants and up to fifteen thousand. So, if some, if a restaurant needs only ten thousand, you know, that, that number might increase. But we are pretty, you know, we'd like to, you know, keep the monies available for this program, to give as much as we can. So, based on that approximate thirty, it might be forty, you know, so.
So, ultimately, our goal is to, is to use all of the money. If you look in there, it says thirty or more businesses with a one-time grant payment of up to fifteen thousand dollars. So, our goal is to really use all the money that's left over.
So, I'm perfectly comfortable with, with giving the dollars, and I would like to use the full million dollars that we allocated as a city to our businesses. The only thing I want to, and I'm not going to stop the Resolution forty-five, twenty-twenty because it has to be passed ASAP, and I appreciate you guys working so hard so quick, but we still have some monies left, I would think. We had heard from some local businesses that were not restaurants, that maybe did get some PPP dollars, maybe only five thousand dollars. You know, even some local businesses may have one employee being the owner, but yet they have frontage, they have space, they have rent to pay, they have bills to pay. They don't fall in the category of getting a PPP loan to support them, nor are they a restaurant or in the hospitality industry, the local yoga store shop, or the, you know, the clothing or what have you. I would like the rest of the dollars to be available for those businesses. Noel and I had a conversation today about that. So, I'm really appreciative of you guys putting this out now because it's exactly the industries that we want to support. But the rest of the dollars, I'd like it to be available for those really small businesses that still have to pay rent, and maybe they have one employee, maybe they got a few thousand dollars in PPP, but, you know, they're still really struggling because they haven't been able to open up. So, as you move forward to the next and hopefully final resolution next time, if we can keep that in mind, too. So, thank you.
City Manager?
Yes, part of my City Manager Report was to bring you up to date on the Small Business Recovery Fund. This might be an appropriate time to do that since we're talking about the dollars. The committee received about fifty-four applications, twenty-one were approved, three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-nine was paid out, the dollars were paid out to eighteen businesses on the twenty-eighth of May. Additional three applications for twenty thousand each has been approved by the committee since that time. Disbursement of those funds will happen actually probably tomorrow. So, that will complete it for a total of four-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, once that dispersment is made to those additional three. As, as in the first phase, the anticipation of the applications did not reach the full one million dollars. As in the second phase, it may very well pan out that it would, it won't amount to the total allocation either. So, one of the things that we can do as we move along is look at a Phase Three and perhaps address, address some of these issues in Phase Three as well for the funds that are remaining.
Thank you.
So, you're kind of saying just, let's just do this phase and then see what's left over, and then address whatever's left over, either for smaller businesses or...
Yeah.
Okay. Noel, I have, Mark, are you, you good? Everybody else good?
I have one question. What was the date for application? Do we have that yet?
We do not.
We, we don't, but we're going to reopen the, the application and go directly to these people rather than having a whole marketing campaign like we did with TV and things like that. So, we're going to go directly to them.
Rochelle, I'm going to go last, so do you have anything else you want to add?
Just on, on what Dana just said, are all of the two-hundred-and-two that fall into this category going to be approached so we don't end up with somebody coming back and say, oh, I didn't know about it, since we're not going to go out there and, and run this thing publicly, you know, with a big ad campaign?
So, our intention is to promote this through the chamber, through the PGA Corridor Association as well. We're also partnering with the Restaurant Association to help get the word out. Dana and I have talked about picking up the phone and calling people because we want to use this money, and we know that the restaurants need this money. So, we do have a plan. We understand that we're not going to be spending marketing dollars to get out there, but we will be reaching out to as many restaurants as we can.
I would like accountability for that to the council on, on how many are actually reached, how many fall into the category, and how many we're able to get in, in touch with. I think it's important that we, we keep track.
I think, though, Rochelle, that once the council approves the funds, we're just approving the program, and then it goes back to the chamber to, I don't think we're the...
It's our funds, though, we, we have ultimate accountability. I know the City Manager is the ultimate sign-off on it, but to avoid restaurants saying, I had no idea and I would have qualified because they're not on the chamber mailing list or the corridor mailing list.
Rochelle, I think the City Manager has a comment. Why don't we let him go?
Just like in Phase One, we did a social media, we did newspaper, we did radio, we did a lot beyond just the contact list that the two organizations have. It goes out, it's very public, we're on Facebook, we're on all types of different social media. As you know, you all get the, the, whatever you call it, the broadcast.
Everything.
It's a big broad net, so it goes well beyond just the list.
Oh, well, that's good. But what Dana had said was that it wasn't, and, and that it was going to just stay with them. So, as long as we're going to do it the way Ron said, that's great.
They have their contact list, and, and we have ours, so it's, we do both.
Okay, no problem.
Good.
Thank you, Rochelle. Dana, I have a question. How did you guys formulate the eighteen-month criteria as opposed to anything else?
So, as we mentioned earlier, and I know, just jumping in for Dana here, but as we mentioned earlier, we had been in contact with the Florida Restaurant Association, try to figure out what would be good criteria for this. And we, you know, we were told a scary stat that over eighty percent of restaurants don't even make it in twelve months. So, our goal with that, with the eighteen months, is someone, once they get past that twelve-month mark, they're going to most likely be open, and they're going to make it. We do not want to give this grant out to a restaurant that is going to receive the grant, the fifteen-thousand-dollar grant, and two months later, they're closed. So, that was our intention with the, with the eighteen months.
And that stat is formulated nationwide, or...
It's, it's a statistic that the Restaurant Association gave me. I'm not exactly sure where it came from, but that's through my conversations with Jody Cross.
And their opinion is it's twelve months is kind of the cutoff. The reason why, the reason why I brought that up is because I've done a little homework on myself on some of the restaurants that have just reopened, they've been open over twelve months, less than eighteen, and they were sustainable through the COVID with no season. And one of them is Firefin, and it's at PGA and Prosperity, it's the old Carmine sushi place that, that they took over. Large operation. The, the owner-operator has been in the business thirty-five years. He was the general manager of Spoto's, and he's been in many restaurants. And then this is his nest egg, that he's put his own heart, this is his restaurant now. And he's, you know, he said he's struggled, but he's been able to, to stay open, would, would hopefully council approving. Would you guys consider adjusting that to twelve months? Because the, the statistic itself says usually they'll, they won't last twelve months. He's been over twelve, less than eighteen.
Yeah, we, we...
Or businesses alike besides that one.
Yeah, we struggled with that. I mean, we went back and forth to even making it thirty-six months because the restaurant business is so fragile, and we really wanted to make this program as fair and equitable as possible. I don't know that we could make it for everybody, and we wanted it to be successful for people to be able to sustain their businesses. So, I don't know what the magic number is. We kind of, but we felt comfortable based on the conversations with Jody Cross and some of the other restaurant owners who've been in business for a long time as well, like Asian Fin, and they felt comfortable with the eighteen months as being a nice, you know, success, success mark after that time because they have momentum and gone through a couple of seasons and, or at least a big full season.
Right. But tailoring this to Palm Beach Gardens needs, would you guys be comfortable with twelve months? Obviously, you're going to look at all the businesses, and some are going to get grants, and some aren't, just like you're doing now. So...
Yeah, we, yeah, we would absolutely... I think that if you're looking at this second phase of program, and you're looking at more customized to the smaller businesses than those that have been in less, I think we can get that covered under Phase Three, because I think Phase Two will go a lot quicker than Phase One, and we'll be prepared to add such language perhaps in Phase Three if they want to consider that.
The difference between that is, is this is a large restaurant, if, for those of you that's been there. I mean, it's big.
What is the square footage of that restaurant?
I don't know, but it's, it's, it's the, it's the, it was the Carmine, you know where Carmine's is. It's that other restaurant that just sits back behind it that was the sushi bar. And then they have the, they're right on the Marina, they've got the outside bar, music, all kinds of TVs, and then a very large office, not office, but like a business place to have your, your private dinners. And then the restaurant itself is large. Have you been there?
No, I haven't been to since it's changed hands.
Right.
But, so I don't, I don't know. I mean, would they qualify anyway? Do they have over seventy-five if they're so big? Do they have over seventy-five employees? Is their gross revenue over three million? So, I'm trying to figure out, see, this is a thing that we go through back and forth over hours and hours between different people and getting different opinions and, and, you know, facts, and trying to help everybody to put together a program that's...
Right. All right, so I'm just trying to adjust a number from eighteen to twelve, so let's just make a choice and...
I think, Carl, we stick with eighteen, and when we have Phase Three, we can revisit twelve months. I think the side, we can't, because we can't take individual restaurants and change the criteria for just one or two individual restaurants. I think you have done a lot of research and have put together a really good program. We did eighteen months also with Phase One, so I think this is something that we need to stick to at the moment.
Is there any way that Phase Three would come before the June twenty-fifth council meeting? Would that be too quickly to try to turn around? Because we won't really know how fast Phase Two goes by. And the reason I ask is, you know, we are meeting, and also, you know, the businesses that are hurting, as you know, are hurting. And the next meeting after that's July sixteen, so we're really moving further and further away from the time that some of these businesses still aren't open. So, I don't know if it's logistically possible, but just a question.
The June twenty-fifth meeting is going to be special set only for one topic.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll have, if, if we revisit...
That doesn't mean you can't call another special meeting for this if it's necessary.
You know, that's true, because we could make, we could do this in thirty minutes, and, and this is important enough to do it if we, so, good point, City Manager.
Be on the same day? Like, one at six and one at seven-thirty, or do you ask to be a whole separate day?
Let's wait and see if we're ready. But I think we all understand what the councils, council desires. Let's get Phase Two going, see how quickly we can get there, and then we will act accordingly as quickly as possible to move to Phase Three, even if it requires a special meeting, or a special meeting before the special meeting, we will, we will take care of that, whatever is required.
All right, so discussion's over?
You guys, thank you so much for doing what you do and, and meeting.
Thank you very much.
I know it's very hard to do what you do and...
So, we're going to go backwards or go forward, if I can have Patty read the title, please?
Resolution forty-five, two thousand and twenty, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, creating the Food Services Stabilization Fund, FSSF, under the Cities Economic Recovery Act, ERA, in response to the economic and personal hardships endured by the food services industry in the city of Palm Beach Gardens due to the COVID-19 pandemic, providing an effective date and further purposes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Imposed? Pass is five to zero. Next, we have comments from the public.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave, I do want to make sure that, and I know you're all aware of the personal and professional commitment we have, not only from these two people here who head up the committee, but all the committee members from the PGA Corridor Association and the Chamber of Commerce who put in a lot of hours going through these applications and, and working out the details of Phase Two, and I'm sure they'll be working out the details of Phase Three. They're working very hard for this city and for this business community, and I don't know how we can thank them enough for what they've been doing, but thank you so much for what you've been doing. It's a great contribution to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Dana, can I, I'm a little out of order, but there is an item on our agenda later on having to do with Northlake and the overlay. You can either stay, or I can ask the question now. What would be the proper procedure? Ask the question now?
Yeah, let's do it now.
All right. There has been some discussion about the Northlake Boulevard overlay and that the PGA Corridor had voiced some opinion about this. Is that accurate? Because I don't know, I don't know if that's accurate or not, so I just want to make sure I have all my facts correct.
To be honest, we have not had a chance to review it.
Okay, so...
We'd like to, but we have not had a chance to review it.
Okay, thank you.
And Maria, for the record, you're, you're speaking to ordinance five, twenty-twenty, or six, twenty-twenty, or both?
I am speaking...
Just so we know what you're referring to. I'm assuming it's ordinance five, twenty-twenty.
They're all, you know, the, the whole, the whole package. So, the overlay would be, the overlay would be ordinance five.
Okay.
So, that was what I was talking about. Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Next, we have comments from the public. Patty, I don't think there's...
There are no comment cards, and there were none emailed in.
Next, we'll have the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the opportunity to bring you some updates on some different programs and projects that we're making progress on. I've already addressed to you the basic data as far as the Small Business Relief Fund is concerned, where we're at today. The next item I'd like to bring to your attention is the, the city's update on a COVID-19. Maladjustment. Since March the tenth, there have been eighty-eight COVID contacts by our fire rescue department. We currently have one employee in quarantine but was non-job-related, and that will end soon. The Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center tells us that they currently have ten COVID-19 patients in the hospital. They have sixty-two beds available and three in the ICU also available, and they have reported over that period of time, three deaths. The Jupiter Medical Center reports that they have twenty-seven COVID-19 patients currently. There are forty-four beds available, eight beds available in addition to that in ICU, and they report eleven deaths since, again, in March tenth. Our ALF and nursing homes in the city, there are nine totaling over fifteen-hundred beds. Currently, we have seven patients with COVID-19. So, that's just the statistics at this point, and I just wanted to bring you up to date as to where we're at today. The next item I'd like to talk to you about is, you're aware that we have made provisions for expedited review of outdoor seating. Normally, there is a special process to go through. We've committed ourselves to approve outdoor seating modifications within two days, most of which are done in one. But just a brief overview, if I may, of what the staff has been doing. There have been a lot of tents that have been going up and been reviewed. For instance, the Kula Fish Bar, Rocco's, Toxos, Spoto's, Scoozy, and the Cooper all have tents approved for outdoor seating. Other outdoor seating arrangements have been made with the Kotler Dance Center for an outdoor performance for the parents. Legacy Place is asking to do a drive-in night movie at the garage on the third level of the garage at Legacy Place. And Trinity Family Medical Center practice has also received approval for a tent for their testing in that area. So, we have been processing arrangements for outdoor seating in an expedited manner, a very simple process, and we've gotten a lot of compliments over staff being able to... A very simple process, and we've gotten a lot of compliments, uh, over staff, uh, being able to review and process quickly. Uh, as far as our voluntary business verification program is concerned, we have had three hundred and forty-five businesses participating in the program. There are restaurants, nail salons, hair shops, beauty shops, barber shops, gyms, retails. Uh, and quite frankly, uh, those verification certificates are displayed proudly on the front entrance to just about all of these shop, three hundred and forty-five shops. I've also seen them placed on their website advertisement that they're open and, uh, they're verified by the City of Palm Beach Gardens as COVID, uh, compliant, CDC compliant. And, uh, they seem to be very proud of the fact, uh, that they have received that recognition. I've already talked about the Small Business Relief Fund, and so the other thing would be the Unemployed Resident Relief Fund. We have issued a total of eleven-hundred-and-twenty-four public gift cards. That was a four-day operation of distribution, not counting the one day, when, which is the fifth day, uh, first day, actually, of a total of five, because we brought people through and gave distributed appointments for them. So, one day of appointments, four days of distribution. We had an average of thirty-five staff members and volunteers working a ten-hour day, all four days. We had a great partnership with, uh, Christ Fellowship Church, which provided us with a lot of volunteers and support and even lunch one day. Uh, the remaining one hundred and twenty-four cards, uh, staff is working with the Police Department and Christ Fellowship Church. We're identifying residents that are shut-ins, uh, that are homebound and can't get out. And our objective there is to get to them and get the, uh, remainder of those cards distributed and, uh, working with Christ Fellowship Church, uh, making sure that they have the accessibility to get to the grocery store or have someone shop for them to get them groceries into their homes. We're very proud of this program in particular, and we've had some council members, uh, put in the time, an amazing amount of time and hard work in helping us through this distribution process. Uh, it was very touching, uh, to see, uh, the benefits and the, and the joy of the residents who received the benefits of these, uh, of this program. Uh, and it got right down to the brass roots of why you're all here, because you want to serve the residents of the City of Palm Beach Gardens. Well, with eleven-hundred-and-twenty-four so far, so far cards issued to those people that are unemployed and have no income coming into the house, you've made a lot of people very happy by approving this program and allowing us to distribute those cards. Uh, I can think of nothing more rewarding than to helping those individuals in this city in need and nothing more appreciated by those people other than being able to receive these cards and put some food on the table also that they could worry about other bills, doing something else. So, you are to be commended and, uh, appreciated for your wisdom in approving this type of program, reaching down into the grassroots of this community and helping those in need. So, with that, I have a little presentation to show you, and then, uh, I have one other announcement after this.
And this program, this grant program has, has really been a lifesaver for us. It's allowed us to make, uh, investments into our business for the safety of our staff, the safety of our customers.
I want to thank Palm Beach Gardens for the twenty thousand dollars. It will help in the future for the rent and for the supplies that we will need to get through.
Thank you, Palm Beach Gardens.
Again, I hope you can all be proud by the policy that you've approved, that it brings funds to all these small businesses to help them survive. I applaud you. Good job. Appreciate your support. The community appreciates your support. We thank you for that. If you would allow me one other thing, because I know that under the current situation that's going on around this country, there are issues that have arisen that, uh, cause a lot of attention to, uh, police departments and their training and their preparation and their policies and their procedures. Um, and, uh, I, I, like you, are probably very, very, very proud of our current, uh, policies and procedures in the Police Department and how we conduct our, our employees and our, our issues that we face. I've asked, uh, Police Chief Clint Shannon to give you an overview of many of the issues that have been raised throughout the country and to some of you individually about what our policies are, what our training is, what our practices are. So, I've asked him for your information to be able to address, uh, some of the issues, uh, with our department that I think, uh, you can be very proud of. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Ma- Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, Council Members. Um, I just wanted to, I know you've been receiving a lot of questions of I ha- as I have about some of our policies and what we do in the department, which, with, with everything that's been highlighted going on throughout the country. So, I just want to take a few minutes to give you an idea of some of the things, and this is just a snapshot of what we're doing in the Police Department, involving policies and training and some of our community, uh, outreach that we do. Uh, discussing our, our policies, uh, as you know, we're a nationally accredited agency through Kalia. And, uh, and we are also, um, accredited through CFA, which is the State of Florida's Commission on, on Law Enforcement Accreditation. As a CFA Florida accredited department, we've been certified, uh, as Excelsior Level, uh, which is fifteen consecutive years without any non-compliance issues. And under Kalia nationally, we have been, uh, certified as Meritorious Level, which is also fifteen continuous years without any non-compliance. We're only one of two duly accredited agencies in Palm Beach County, and we are one of only twenty-eight state accredited, uh, duly accredited agencies throughout the state of Florida, and that's out of three hundred and eighty-seven agencies. And so, we're really proud of, of, of our work in that area. But, uh, we also, uh, wanted to point out some of the things that we're doing. We've, we've got multiple first-line supervisors working out on the streets all the time. Uh, it's twenty-four-seven. We're able to get these experienced tactical decision-makers on critical scenes very quickly. Uh, and as you know, we deploy multiple less lethal options in use of force. We have tasers, aspetans, uh, Bing Bag deployment systems, our OC pepper spray, and, uh, a rip-hobble restraint, which is, uh, used to avoid possible, uh, positional asphyxiation issues. Um, we're fu- we're, uh, fully deployed with an extensive body-worn camera program and have sent, been since two thousand and sixteen. We, uh, that includes, uh, policies, strict policies on activation and retention. And, uh, we've been recognized throughout Palm Beach County and specifically by the State Attorney's Office as having a model body-worn camera program. Uh, our use of force policies and, and what we do. Uh, we have a contemporary use of force policy which requires extensive reporting and review on every instance that we use force. This is reviewed, uh, by the supervisor up the chain of command up to and including to the, the Chief of Police. Uh, during the review, we are required to review all of our body-worn camera footage on that incident. We also, uh, as part of the policy, our officers, uh, have a duty and are required to intervene when they believe another officer is using excessive or unnecessary force or engaging in any misconduct. It's spelled out in our policy. Uh, in our policy, chokeholds are prohibited unless deadly force is authorized at the highest level. For more than fifteen years, we've had a database that tracks all use of force reports and an early warning system that tracks and reviews potential officer issues that need to be addressed. Uh, some of the training we're doing, as we, as you know, we probably train as much as any agency in the state of Florida. Uh, all Palm Beach Co- County, or all Palm Beach Gardens officers receive monthly in-house training and additional training outside of our agency. Uh, we conduct probably ten times the amount of training that the state of Florida requires. Uh, in, uh, in December of two thousand and seventeen, we were the first, uh, we, or we opened, as you know, and you've all viewed, our state-of-the-art tactical training facility, uh, where we do, uh, very modern, contemporary defensive tactics training, our less lethal force training, de-escalation training. Uh, we have realistic scenario-based training. We've got a state-of-the-art use-of-force simulator and a driving simulator. Um, we, we adhere to the Police Executive Research Forum, uh, PERFs, Thirty Guiding Principles in the Use of Force. Um, it's called ICAT, which is Integrated Communications Assessment and Tactics. We've trained all our officers in these areas. It stresses the sanctity of life and it also stresses the guardian mentality of our officers. In two thousand and seventeen, we were the first agency in the state of Florida in which all of our officers received peace officer pre-escalation training. You hear a lot about that now. All of our officers receive fair and impartial police training, a cultural sensitivity training, human diversity training. Uh, all of our officers are certified in crisis intervention training, which is interacting with people with mental health issues who are in crisis, and this is an alternative to use of force. We continually, uh, do refresher training on every one of those topics and more that I discussed. Uh, our community programs, which many of you are aware that we are involved with too, um, we're a partner with Suits for Seniors. Uh, we, we conduct our Ball Stars, uh, basketball camp every summer. We have Public Safety Day. We are also a partner with MAMA, which is Mothers Against Murderers Association, and the Riviera Beach Youth Recreation Association, as most of the Riviera Beach youth go to school in our city and they also attend our recreation activities. Uh, and we're also a member of the Clergy Coalition of, of Palm Beach County. That's just basically a quick snapshot of what your department's doing and, and some of the things that we have in place. I'm extremely proud of the men and women. It's been a, a long month this week. Uh, but, uh, they have performed outstanding and, uh, and I couldn't be prouder of, of the way that they take care of, of, of our community. Um, I really, uh, couldn't be prouder, and this week is a shining example of that. And I'm not sure which community member, uh, put the sticker on the outside of our gate going into our police station on the stop sign with the big "We love you," but we really appreciate that. Uh, and I entertain any questions, uh, Mr. Mayor or Council Members that you would have.
Thank you, Chief. You know, I was just going to tell you guys that, you know, we usually don't have conversation after the City Manager Report, but this would really be a good time if we have conversation based on what we're doing, where we've been. I mean, I know you can bring it up in your reports later, but it's here and now, the chief's at the podium, and, you know, I for one couldn't be prouder to be a part of the council and my friends and being a, a previous employee of the Police Department for most of my life and, and now seeing not only what the pandemic's doing to our community, what the rioting is doing to our country and how we're preparing to not only deal with the pandemic, but to now deal with the possible looting or whatever could be going on. It's a real weird time to be anybody, a business owner or a person staying at home or police or council member. So, um, I just want to thank you for your service, sir, as I always do. And I wish there was a way we could, you know, give a fist pump or a handshake or a hug to all of our officers and firefighters that are, that are doing what they do every day for us. So, anybody else have any comments? Rochelle?
Can I just make a quick comment? First of all, thank you to the City Manager and staff for making us look good. I mean, great for you guys to get out to the community, but, um, you guys made us look good this past month, and we were so happy to, to support the small businesses and the conversations about how to help them and the residents to, uh, the chief. You know, when you watch the news and you see all the mayhem going on around the country, you, when you think back, when you think about what happens in our neighborhood and when you think of the communications and just daily interactions with the Police and Fire Department here in our city, uh, you guys are an example of what police and fire are supposed to be. So, I want our residents to know that, you know, our police and fire, uh, first responders are so well-trained. They're here to serve, not to, not to, uh, invoke any other violence or, or, you know, any other passions like that. They're actually here to help. And we get constant emails from residents in the city about our police and how they do wonderful things and the Fire Department do wonderful things, just to help. Uh, and that's why I think our community is going to be safe through all of this, and it's, it's the leadership that you guys show. So, thanks for making us look good and thanks for keeping us safe. And, uh, yeah, this is from our firefighter guys. I don't know how to put this on, but, you know, I was giving one of these things...
Over your head.
I'll put it on later, okay?
Do it later.
But, uh, but thanks, guys. Oh, last question. The hundred-and-twenty-four cards that are remaining, um, there was a resident asked, he, he got there late, and, uh, he's not homebound, and he said, are there any more cards? Is there any way I can get any more? So, I don't know if someone that's not home...
You can give us that information. We'll take care of that.
Thank you.
I, I think we're raising our hand so we can all be, be noticed and recognized. Rochelle, by the way, can you hear us okay?
Mm-hmm. No problem.
Um, Chief, you know, I've, I've been here since two thousand and sixteen and saw the process of why and how we got body cameras, and we can never foresee some of the misfortune that happens and some of the bad judgment that happens. Um, but I have seen that our Police Department and our Fire Department really, um, look at those incidences, and that's not the strongest word I could use, but it's a, the right one. And we grow from that. We change our strategy. We adapt to what we need. Body cameras was a good example of that, and I know that our Tactical Center, we, we train everybody here and, and the, our police go above and beyond when it comes to training. And I just want to say that, um, we do get a lot of emails from people, but we also get a lot of emails that say how, how good and how thoughtful our police are and, um, how responsive they are. And, uh, we can't plan for everything. We don't have a crystal ball. I wish we did, because imagine how wonderful the world would be if we did. Uh, but I do want to say thank you, and I do know that from every bad experience that we have, we grow and make better decisions going forward so that we can not... We can put out those fires as we go along, so thank you. And Ron, thank you for putting together such a great team.
Chelsea, you have anything?
Yeah, so I've spent some time at the county commission meetings and some other areas and listened to a lot of other electeds in, in communities that are differently hit than ours has been. And the checklist of what they're hoping their Police Department will do, you guys have been doing for several years. Literally, you could go down the list and you are all doing all of them, and I've seen firsthand, we've all gotten to go and see it. And, um, very thankful for your continued professionalism and how safe we all are because of it.
Perfect. Rochelle?
Um, I just want to echo what everyone else has, has already said. As a thirty-five-year resident of the city, I have always felt safe in our city and never really had the need, thank goodness, to, to get to know too many of our... had the need, thank goodness, to get to know too many of our first responders until I became on council. And just getting to know everyone personally and feeling who they are and what makes them tick and how they go to work every day with us in mind and putting themselves on the line for us. Like Chelsea said, it's true. Other departments right now are scrambling because they need to come up with a plan, and we already have that plan, we've executed that plan, but we're not stopping there. The training continues, and I have faith that we will continue to move forward and be an example for everybody else. So thank you, Chief, and thank everyone in both departments for all they do for us all the time.
Well said, thank you. This is gonna sound a little bit odd, but can I have a motion in a second that we have an awesome city manager and a great chief of police and fire chief? Can we second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's move on. Okay, guys, next we have the consent agenda.
That's all we are.
And there's nothing pulled? So can you get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion. We approve a consent agenda.
Second?
Second. Only if we can get Men's Health to come out and get a photo of our mayor on the cover of-
What are you talking about?
It's Men's Health Month this month, Congress.
Anyway, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have public hearings. I have to read the quasi-judicial statement. Tonight we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance 6, 2020, request to rezone and establish the PUD with a major conditional use approval. Resolution 35, 2020, site plan number three approval to allow the development of 390 single-family dwelling units. This means that the city council is required by law to pace its decision on the evidence contained in the records of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The city council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, or other participants have made their presentation and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer any written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk right here to my left. The city clerk will now swear on all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
We will now have first read on ordinance 5, 2020.
Ordinance 5, 2020, in accordance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78, land development at Section 78-226, Northlake Boulevard overlay zoning district, NBOZ. Zoning regulations B, land use chart, in order to add self-service storage use to the list of conditional uses in the land use chart, providing that each and every section and subsection of Chapter 78, land development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I will now open the public hearing. Ordinance 5 and ordinance 6 will be a combined presentation, however, the city clerk will read the titles separately, and the votes will be taken separately. Petitioner presentation?
Yes.
How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members. For the record, Josh Nichols, Wishmit Nichols, we're the agent for the applicant. So as you see before you, this is the Garden Self-Storage Project, and we have a couple items, as you said, that we're gonna combine into one presentation. I think they're all linked together. I just want to orient you to the-
Excuse me, can you please speak louder, we're recording. Thank you.
Absolutely. State that you were sworn in, for the record.
Yes, I was sworn in, yes. So again, this is, the location of the property is just north of Northlake Boulevard and on Roan Lane on the west side, and then also kinda at the corner of northbound I-95 and Northlake. So before I get too much into the formal requests, I wanted to turn it over to Steve Mackey, who's the property owner. He's gonna give us a little bit of history and how we got here with this parcel. Also with me tonight, I do have David Mackey, as well as our architects from Ken Carlson's office with us. So I'll turn it over to Steve.
Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Mackey. I own this property with my father, who is here tonight.
Steve, what's your address for the record, please?
Excuse me?
What's your address for the record?
501 Northwest 7th Street, Delray Beach, Florida.
Have you been sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I wanted to give a brief history of this property to kinda give everybody some context of where we have been as a family and my dad, and where we have arrived and why we're here tonight. Back in 1975, my father, Dave Mackey, bought his first real estate office here, circled in red. It was a little duplex. He was 27-years-old. He was a single-family home builder here in Palm Beach Gardens. As you can see, Northlake Boulevard is a two-lane road right to the east here. 1986, 10-years later, he completes the purchase of the fifth duplex to assemble the parcel that exists today. It's 1.77 acres. As you can notice from the overhead, there's just a ton of development that happened in that 10-year period, and also notice, Northlake Boulevard has really started to grow and widen. 1991, he cleared the land and he was getting ready to make way for the Capital Lighting Building. He did a deal with Capital Lighting to do a building that was completed in 1995. I'm sure if you guys have been here, you were very familiar with that building, as they were there for 20 years. It was a 17,000-square-foot retail building. We had a very long, fantastic relationship with the family that owned Capital Lighting. In the Great Recession, they needed to shrink their real estate footprint down to, and I think that up here, they went to 5,000 square feet on a store on PGA Boulevard. They might still be there, I'm not quite sure. So after they moved out, we re-tenanted the property with a Crunch Fitness gym. We spent a bunch of time and money converting the building over to a gym. They only made it a couple years into their lease. They had told us that the square footage was too small for their format, that they needed to be successful, and the access points were quite difficult for them. So they ended up vacating, you know, prematurely, let's say. So, you know, that's when we kind of realized that we had lost Capital Lighting, then we lost Crunch Fitness, that we need to do something with the property. And we started thinking, we needed to reposition this property. The 17,000-square-foot footprint or size of the building for retail was too large for your local retailers now. And 2010, the retail world started changing, and it's still changing. So in this location, we have incredible visibility, but as I'm sure you're all aware, the access points due to the enormous amount of traffic makes it quite difficult. So we started thinking, and we arrived at the self-storage use. Self-storage facilities require fantastic visibility to be successful, and they generate minimal traffic. That is when I reached out to the city staff to start the conversation of, is this possible? How can we make this happen? From the beginning, I have to say that city staff has been absolutely phenomenal. They had some serious reservations in the beginning about the use. They were quite familiar with self-storage buildings and were not too thrilled with the look of them, and they don't, you know, just the look of them, they're just big and boxy and kinda ugly. So they heard me out, though. It was, they were just fantastic to listen to my issues that I had with trying to make this property successful. And they challenged myself and my design team. They're like, Steve, we're not thrilled about the self-storages in our experience, you know, they're big and ugly, but we'll challenge you, you know, to come up with a design that fits within the height and the lock coverage limits, and we'll hear you out. So we went back and forth for a number of iterations, and, you know, they really pushed our staff, excuse me, the staff really pushed our team, you know, for over a year of going back and forth and back and forth. And, you know, with such a high-profile location, we wanted the building to make a statement. It also had to remain appropriate in scale to the area, and I just want to say that you guys should be very proud of your staff. You know, I do work in other parts of the city and, not this city, I'm sorry, other parts of the county, and they're just, they're more difficult. They don't tell you, you know, what their vision is, they just say, no, no reason. So at any rate, it was a nice collaborative effort with our team and the staff, and I think that we've arrived at a building that we can all be very proud of.
Thank you, Steve. So I'll go back to more of the technical aspect of this, and again, the architecture really does steal the show, but I know I have to go through my mundane items on my planning side. So we do have several requests. The first, we have a rezoning for the CG1 to the PUD overlay. We have a PUD site plan approval with one waiver that we'll get into. Major conditional use approval for the self-storage. And then, actually first, which is on your list, is the NBOZ major conditional use addition, putting the self-storage in there. We went to PZAB and we had a 6-0 approval, and as you can see, a couple little teaser renderings at the bottom there, some night shots of the architecture. So again, this is what was placed into the zoning regulations chart in terms of the NBOZ, so it's a conditional use in all of the sub-districts within NBOZ. Don't be scared about all the text on this slide. We're really, all the red is what's existing, the green is the new. So it's basically some additional supplemental regulations that are in the Note 40 underneath that use. So you can see the outdoor storage of boats, watercrafts, recreational vehicles is strictly prohibited. On-site rental of moving trucks, trailers, vans, or equivalent is prohibited. Outdoor paging or other outdoor loudspeakers shall be permitted, no outdoor, no self-storage shall be permitted within 2,500 feet of another self-storage. And then roll-up exterior doors mainly provide access to interior corridors and not be visible from the public right. See from our site plan that we've included a lot of these elements. So this is a color site plan. Basically, the black and white is difficult to see some of the detail. So if you recall the existing site, we have these two access points, the north and south end, so we've utilized those again. So how this would function is the typical tenant would come in, and they could either come in the north or the south. They would come into the front of the building there where you see the red and blue car and the two handicap spaces. That would be where the tenant, where the office would be to rent a unit. From there, you would go back to the north, you'd take a left, and you would circle underneath the building, and underneath the building is the loading. So that loading, you can enter into the building, and that's where the elevators would be. So it's a dual purpose. So one is that you have the loading covered from the weather elements, and then also-
Let me interrupt you for one minute, we're having a problem with the, with the, Sharon screaming, not stop and start again.
Okay.
Excuse us, but we're having difficulty with our, Rochelle cannot see the presentation, so we're gonna have to restart it, or Eric is gonna try to take care of that.
You're good? You're back up? You can see it? Everyone? You're good? Okay. All right, so I think I was going through the loading, the drop-off. So while it became more difficult design, because we were splitting up the buildings, it became two standalone buildings, basically with that middle component, but that is a pass-through that's at the 13-6, so a fire truck can get through there. As you'll see along the north side as well, there's a long strip of pavement there on the north side, and that's for a T-turnaround for a fire truck. So there was a lot of discussion with multiple agencies to make sure that we were getting this technically code-compliant. And again, also, very, a lot of different iterations of the site plan as well, you know, having, whether the loading zones were facing the road, whether we pushed them in the back. So I think we came out with a really good design. There are gates, so it is controlled access. Once you are a tenant of the building, there are controlled access points, and you'll see that as we move further along. So again, we've kinda pushed the building toward 95, and we've stepped the building a bit to make sure we're keeping with those setbacks. We've placed a lot of landscaping that you'll also see some of the renderings as well. Yeah, very good thing, it's not advancing. Oh, there we go. That's okay. So here's some of the site improvements. So we have the architecture again. I know everyone's probably seen the existing building. It's a significant upgrade to the location. And really, what I think this architecture took on was an office-building motif. So when you drive by, you would think it was an office versus self-storage, and I'll go into some of those details. We have the ring road that goes through the middle of the building to allow for the adequate fire access and also minor impact to the abutting. We have a residential parcel to the north, even though I'll show you later that that's actually proposed to be a drainage parcel for the new improvements to 95. Additional green-screen trellises. So again, we're trying to break up the larger massing, certain walls to break that up, and so we do have those green-screen trellises. Rebranding, new signage, so new monument sign to be refaced, and obviously some wall signage that matches. Again, the loading protected from the inclement weather, and I think one of the big turning points for the project was developing that tunnel concept. So again, not only the weather, but also there's no view of it from the right-of-way. We proposed the security gates from a Sept Ed situation, so we worked with the city's police department and made sure that we had those pieces in place, because they were worried also that if someone was to get past the gates, that they could hang out underneath the tunnel that we have. So there's ability to close that off as well, to avoid anyone sneaking in there. And again, the gym conversion to self-storage. So again, access, access, traffic, traffic. That's the big issue with this site. And the conversion to the self-storage is about an 81% reduction in the average daily trip, so that'll really help this specific locale. So here we get to the pretty pictures, and we've got, this is basically if you were looking almost from underneath the overpass, looking back to the east, and you can see the architecture with a lot of glazing, different variations to the recess projections, a lot of different materials as well. You see, it's almost like a wood, a wood look there in the middle of the building. You see the green-screen trellis, and also the landscaping we've put in there as well. And we're also trying to show roughly a five-year maturity growth there for the landscaping to show it true to life. There you can see on the left-hand side of the screen is the security gates, so we do have those. That's a vehicle exiting the property. Again, you've got the, you see the new signage branding, and then what you're seeing on the first floor is the leasing office. So that's the office, and then above that, there's glazing. And what we did was we were actually able to see beyond that, so it created that depth to it. So it's not just a fake window, those are true windows, but what we did is that first level, we actually did that so it's a bit screen, so you don't see those storage unit roll up doors. So there was a lot of detail taken into account with this. And again, you can see the different materials at the roof line with the cap and then the cladding there, different material. So this is a view if you were on the 95 north ramp, looking back to the southeast. Again, the landscaping infused on there, so that is true to life to what we have on the landscape plan. Again, capping that corner with the glazing, again, with the roof line, different materials, recess and projections really, really kinda transforms that from a self-storage to more of an office look. So just going back to the waiver request, we do have one waiver, and that is, we're required a 90-foot separation or setback, because it is a residential parcel to the north. Now again, what I was discussing is that will be a future, the parcel to the north will be a future drainage tract, and I'll show you what that looks like, but we are asking for that reduction of 54 feet. Again, if we were to have to adhere to that, the property is only 180 feet in width, so it would take up quite a bit of the property, render it undevelopable. So again, access to the property and along Northlake and the proposed improvement. So this is the current situation. As you can see, coming east off of 95 or just coming east on Northlake, you see there's an existing left-hand turn lane onto Roan. This is the proposed scenario for Northlake and as well as for 95. And this is probably, this is a few years out is when- And this is probably, this is a few years out is when they expect to start construction. But as you can see, it does close off that left turn, so that creates some difficulty, especially if this was to have been redeveloped, proposed for some type of commercial development, it would really have a tough time to survive there. So, self-storage is a low generator. It's a destination location. It's not a passerby thing, so it really makes sense here. And then you can see to our north, why further justification. Obviously, that won't be residential in the future. That will be a pond for the drainage to accommodate the improvements. I'm not gonna go through these individually, so, but we do have the NBOZ changes to the plan and staff reports findings. We're in agreement with staff's findings on those and all the conditions of approval relating to the NBOZ. This is for the rezoning. So, again, just to make sure, you see that we did address all of the requirements of each of these, and this is the major conditional use. So, we did go through those in our justification, in our plans, to make sure these were all addressed. And, again, just going back to the project highlights and finishing with a nice, the evening shot there of the building. So, repositioning the property, it needed to become something else. Tenants haven't been able to stay in there. It was a very challenged location, as you've seen. Architectural and site layout designed to enhance the urban fabric, so this will really kind of be a benefit to the locale. Scaled to fit with the NBOZ corridor. And then, again, that gym conversion, really with traffic being an issue, is an 81% reduction. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have, and looking forward to the project moving forward.
Rochelle? Any questions?
Is staff gonna do a presentation on this, or no?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Natalie Crowley, Director of Planning and Zoning. At this point in time, staff has no further presentation. I think that Mr. Nichols has done a very thorough job. I do want to reiterate that there are several items that incorporate, that were incorporated in his presentation. It was an all-inclusive presentation that addressed Ordinance 5 and Ordinance 6, and of course, at second reading, the resolution will be brought before you, which is the rezoning and site plan approval, the companion item. I do want to thank Mr. Mackey and Mr. Nichols for really working with staff on this project. I think that it was a very collaborative effort to echo his comments, and I do want to thank them, especially working with many of the architectural concerns. We do support the waiver. I do want to make note that the parcel that is immediately to the north of the site has been acquired by DOT for the purposes of drainage for the I-95 widening. So, even though the subject waiver, it's really, it's a technical necessity, because it has a residential designation, it will not be developed for residential purposes. DOT is moving forward with construction for those improvements. We do support the waiver for that. We do support the project overall. And the only other note that I wanted to point out was the ugly fence that is existing on that corner will be replaced with this project with a nice vinyl-coated fence. The applicant will be doing that. We got DOT to agree to that, which is a victory. And that, too, will be replaced with this project. So, no further presentation by staff, but we are more than happy to ask any questions regarding any of these petitions. Thank you.
My question's actually for staff, so that's why I wanted to give Natalie a chance for her input first. I want to thank Mr. Mackey first for his willingness to work with staff on the project. I happen to feel that it's the right project in the right place at the right time. It certainly does not look like your typical self-storage center. It's a beautiful building, and it would definitely up the wow factor for that area. My problem at this point is with Ordinance 5. This council has had multiple discussions about Northlake Boulevard and an ultimate plan for Northlake Boulevard, and where we want that to go. None of us are very happy with the piecemeal nature of the street. A lot of it is not the city's fault. We're dealing with other municipalities in the county in many instances. I know Carl has been on the Northlake Task Force and has been trying really hard to come up with a plan for Northlake. We have FDOT coming in with the changes to the intersection, and there has been some reach-out by the corridor, the chamber, to work on a plan with the city if that were possible. My question to Natalie is, is there any way to make a parcel-specific change to the overlay without changing the entire overlay? Because looking forward at piecemeal changes to the entire overlay on Northlake without a comprehensive plan for what we want that street to ultimately look like, at least the parcels that are under our control, makes me wary of approving Ordinance 5.
I'd be happy to address that. So, the short answer is, is that an overlay is intended to serve the purposes of a district. So, anything you're doing intentionally to single out a particular parcel, I don't recommend it. If that's what we were trying to do, we would have crafted this text amendment with that consideration. I feel extremely comfortable the way that this text amendment has been crafted. If you look at the specific text that's on page four of the staff report, you'll note that staff has developed very rigorous criteria to ensure that the use is harmonious with the standards that we have in the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and that include the highest quality. I do want to point out that self-storage is a major conditional use along the PGA corridor. So, we also have self-storage uses throughout the city. Of course, the city council approved the most recent one along Riverside Drive. So, self-storage use is not a new use to the city. And the process is the most important here, is the most important aspect to consider, because we included it as a major conditional use, which means that every single self-storage building that comes before the city for approval will have to go before the Planning and Zoning Board and before the city council. And, of course, it'll be vetted by staff. So, the process of a major conditional use process enables the guarantee to be able to do a site-specific review for each individual project. It has been specifically not included as an outright permitted use, so that's very important to mention. And then the second aspect, of course, is if you look at the criteria, there's distance criteria that we've included, there's prohibitions on outdoor storage, there's prohibitions on boat storage, and there's very detailed criteria that's been included that self-storage facilities must meet in order to address the architectural criteria. So, we went really above and beyond in order to address this. We believe that this project and all projects that can meet this criteria will be an improvement in the district, and we are extremely comfortable with this text amendment. The use itself, like I said, is a major conditional use in, throughout the city, in commercial zoning districts and industrial zoning districts, and it is permitted in the PGA corridor overlay as long as the orientation of the structure itself is not functionally oriented toward PGA. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Rochelle, we're gonna pause a bit, because I was gonna read the ex parte after Ordinance 6, 2020, but since we're in discussion now and asking questions, let's go ahead and do if there's any expertises now. And I have none.
I got a call today from one of our business owners about this. So, would that be considered ex parte?
Yes, yeah, we need to...
I got a call from John Channing today.
I actually have three expertises, well, four if you can be driving through, again, just to familiarize yourself with the area, drive by it all the time. So, today I did speak with John Channing regarding the impacts on the NBOZ. Kentuma also discussing the same impacts on the Northlake. And Natalie and I had a conversation as well earlier today about the impacts on Northlake Boulevard overlay and the future of Northlake Boulevard. And for the record, Patty, I'm gonna submit my expertises. I'll just email them to you tomorrow, if that's all right, showing my expertise on all of the items on the council tonight.
Chelsea, you were no? Okay, Rochelle, any expertises?
Yes, I had a call from John Channing as well, but I also reached out to Dana, to talk to Dana about what impact the corridor has had and what they had done and their feelings on their input into ultimately what Northlake's going to look like. They're the only two.
Understood. And John Channing called me today as well. All right, so then, let's move on. Anybody else have any questions for Josh or Natalie at this point?
Just one. Is that okay? Did you need to do outreach to the local community, to the residents behind you? Was that a necessity? I don't know if it happened or if it was even required.
Public notice was required for both the planning and zoning action and this city council action, so the application has fulfilled the public notice requirements. It's been advertised, mailers were sent, and the petition has been, the parcel has been posted.
And any feedback from the residents?
No. And in full disclosure, we did not meet with anyone from the public, but we didn't receive any...
Thank you.
We have not received any letters or objections on the project.
Okay, and I do have a comment. The Northlake Boulevard overlay versus the PGA Boulevard overlay are apples and oranges. I mean, you can't compare one to the other. When you talk about where we have CG1 in our city, do we even have CG1 on PGA Boulevard? No, limited amounts of CG1. So, this is, you know, the Northlake Boulevard Task Force is different than the Northlake Boulevard overlay. You know, one, we're talking about transportation, and the other, we're talking about land use. So, we need to make sure that people know that we do not have the same. PGA Boulevard is Palm Beach Gardens, period. Northlake Boulevard is five different governing entities, so it's really hard to have equality from our city to Lake Park to North Palm to the county and to West Palm. So, I think when, given staff, and I know how hard staff works, to try to fit the right use to a parcel. And one thing we've done here with self-storage is that this building, because of the use, as you said, it's a destination. It is not, you know, a shopping, it's not a retail center. So, traffic impacts are much lower now by having storage there. Do we have enough, do we need any more storage? Did you do that kind of homework? I mean, is there a need for storage?
Yes.
Yeah.
[laughing] There's never enough storage, because we have no basements. We have no attics. I mean, you know, I have no basement. I came from Connecticut, and I had a, you know, thousand-square-foot basement.
It's generally speaking, it's, you know, they do a three-mile radius, and you count the amount of square feet, and you count your amount of people. Within one mile outside of an outdated storage facility on southern or south on military, there's not even a single self-storage facility within a one-mile radius of this location. It is one of, speaking with brokers and finance people for this project, they say that this is one of the best locations that they've seen for self-storage in all of South Florida, because of the high visibility. It's an infill thing. It's a smaller project. It's on borderline of economically not feasible. So, yes, it is a fantastic location. And just one quick comment on the NBOZ. You know, we've been dealing with this overlay since, when did it go into place? Like, early 2000s? And I think that, maybe someone else here knows, but it's just been a...
1997.
It's just been a very difficult, because like you said, there's five governing authorities. I was following the NBOZ when I was going in, you know, hoping to see all this amazing stuff that consultants put together in these big booklets in 2000. And having the five different agencies doing their stuff, and it's just very difficult to get all five people to come together with a cohesive vision for that road. So, I just want to put that out there. We've been dealing with it for a long time, and it's patchwork. It's difficult, so, anyway.
Thank you. And Natalie, my question to Dana earlier was, was, was there a discussion with the PGA Corridor Association about this? And she seemed to indicate that there was not, correct?
Yes. We haven't received anything that represents the PGA Corridor Association in an official position. I'm not aware of any position whatsoever that the PGA Corridor Association as an entity has taken. Thank you. I have no more questions.
Mark?
Couple simple questions. It's a three-story building, correct?
That is correct. So, three stories, 36 feet in height.
And what is the hours of operation?
It's...
Like any other storage unit?
We don't have the end user yet, so we don't know the exact hours, but it's typically, it's not gonna be a 24-hour facility, so it's probably eight to nine, something like that at night. So, it's not gonna be a 24-hour. You can't go in at all hours, even if you are a tenant, so it will be limited, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, those are the concerns that the neighbors have, is to make sure that the lighting is not gonna be obscene and that the people aren't gonna be rolling in in their U-Hauls at, you know, 2 o'clock in the morning.
Absolutely, yeah. No, you won't be permitted to do that.
You know, it's not our job to decide business models for different entities. We don't decide whether or not a business is gonna succeed or fail in a particular spot. I didn't realize, I mean, there aren't, I can't think of any real close storage units to that particular spot, so... Yeah, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with it being a storage unit there. It looks fantastic. It's gonna look great. It is a challenging spot. The impact on Northlake Boulevard, we can't, like you said, and obviously, there's always a concern about the future, but you've got some pretty big parcels right there with some, you know, car dealerships, et cetera, that are not going anywhere. So, there's only so much we can do, but as long as the projects that come forward can be vetted by our staff, especially if it's gonna be another storage unit within 2,500 or beyond 2,500 feet, it still has to come to council for approval, so I don't see, I mean, who's to say if some other storage unit wants to open up down the street? It seems like maybe not the greatest idea for someone else to try to jump on, but, you know, I have confidence in our staff to make sure that the future of Northlake Boulevard will be as good as we can make it, at least in that part of town, because you've got some longstanding businesses that aren't going anywhere. So, I don't have a problem with it, as long as the neighbors know that the facility is gonna be well-kept. I mean, that's the knock on storage units, is that, you know, they get dark and shady. So, this unit, particular space, whoever takes over will make sure that it doesn't get that way. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Go ahead, Chelsea.
Thank you. It looks like it'll be a good building. I feel like I'm putting my, I was on zoning for a while, so I won't put my zoning hat back on. I love that you have about 431 less trips expected. That's great. I don't see a lot of green building features, though. Can you tell me what they are?
And when you're saying green building, are you talking interior or actually landscape?
Not landscape so much, sustainability, even, I don't know, like electric vehicles, spaces, HVAC, I mean, anything. Is there anything?
I don't think there's anything specifically spec'd. I mean, the Florida Building Code does a really good job at making, it almost gets you LEED bronze, you know, or certification. But I don't think we have, and again, we do have those green screens that are on there, so you're gonna have some living material on the building. So, that will help from some of the heat island effect. And then also, the kind of the tunnel that goes through will prevent some of that heat island effect as well, but, yeah, go ahead.
I can just add to that, that these buildings by their nature are very low consumers of electricity. They've got the LED lights inside that are motion-activated now. They've got very low consumption of energy in general. There's not a lot of people in them. They don't generate a lot of traffic. They don't generate a lot of, you know, they don't draw down a lot of electric. The AC, it stays very well insulated. You know, you just don't have a lot of anything going on inside of them, so that's just my comment.
That's it, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Carl. AIPP, there's an Arts in Public Places, that'll come to us later, or go through AIPP later?
We have a condition of approval that covers that, absolutely.
Yes, there's a, the standard requirement that if the vertical construction exceeds the $1 million figure, the applicant will be required to apply or meet the Art in Public Places Code. So, that would be a separate process if they choose to do the art. Yes, the code provides for cash in lieu of or art itself on-site.
All right, so I have a couple questions. I kind of wish, what was the name of the sports place that's down Santry? That went out of business and now there's what?
Gander Mountain?
This would have been a great spot for them to go into the Gander Mountain area, tucked away right on 95. But by changing... But by changing, Natalie, by changing the zoning regulation to this, is it specific to this particular pot of land, or does it, or does it flow over into the Northlake Corridor area where it might open up other ideas, or if somebody else wants to put a storage somewhere else there? Because I'm not a big-
Okay, I need to clarify that.
Please.
So, right now, in the city, on any single parcel that has commercial general zoning, which this parcel does, a self-storage use is allowed as a major conditional use. That's, that's everywhere in the city. So, you have several overlays in the city that provide an additional heightened regulation. So, we have the PGA overlay, which provides for heightened architectural review, heightened landscaping, a parkway system. You also have the Northlake Boulevard overlay zone, which consists of several districts, which more or less stretches from Military Trail to US1. It's separate from the task force. The task force was established really for the purposes of beautifying the medians, for contributing, for a funding mechanism to address that. The uses, the zoning, the landscaping are all dressed, are all addressed individually with each jurisdiction's code. This particular request is really subject to the city's jurisdiction. We happen to have a whole list of uses in the city's Northlake Boulevard overlay zone, and in that list, self-storage is not permitted. So, this particular request had to be processed. In order for this particular request to be processed, a update to the Northlake overlay zone was required. So, what this does, it allows for self-storage facilities to be located along the Northlake Boulevard overlay zoning, but as a major conditional use. So, it's not an outright permitted use. Any single self-storage facility that's proposed must come before the city council individually for approval. That's the process we establish, and not only that, they have to meet the criteria that has been, that will be codified if council approves it, to show that they've met that major conditional use criteria. So, that's how we've done to ensure that all the self-storage facilities, if any, come forward are of the highest quality in our city.
Perfect, thank you. Well, we're all in favor of trying to reduce traffic on Northlake Boulevard, and that was one of the reasons why we approved Costco gas station, because of the reduction in traffic, and that, I'm not a fan of any more storages, but this does fit in that area, and if another storage place comes up, I'm not going to be in favor of it at all. But what I do like, Josh, is we want art in public places, so I'm in favor of art as opposed to giving us money. So, that's all I have to say on the matter. I'm not, nope. All right, so we got to, well, actually, we still have to go for comment cards, which I, Patty, we don't have any, and so this was still part of the public hearing, because this was just the question, so now I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll go to motion in second, please.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion. That we approve ordinance 5, 2020.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for discussion, but it's between us five.
Second.
Sir?
I'll second.
Yeah, did we have a second?
I second, yeah.
Mark seconded. Discussion between us five?
I think our questions were answered.
I mean, if you remember when we went to the, we went to the I-95 explanation that DOT put on, I was really concerned about the businesses on that specific corner, and, you know, we all wouldn't, you know, if you had a list of what you'd want to have, probably self-storage wouldn't be our number one, but for that spot, pushing right up against I-95 and Northlake that are both expanding in the next, you know, five to 20 years, I don't know what else could be feasible, and we need our businesses to be successful. It's, it seems like a win-win in the end. We just have to keep our eye out for anything that comes in the future, so it's not a whole row of storage units on Northlake Boulevard.
Yeah. Rochelle? Final thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I agree with Chelsea. I'm not thrilled about the concept of making a change to the entire overlay, even though we will have the ability for yea or nay further on down, just as a concept, because we need some plan for what we can control on that street. I think we need that going forward, but this project is too perfect for this space at this time, and was done in such a way that I can't see anything else fitting in there. So, I'm inclined to go along, but we'll definitely have reservations going forward, and I'm happy that Natalie, that staff did put in specifics to control what will happen later. I just would like to see further on, more of a plan for the overlay and any other changes, so I would be on board.
All right, well, I mean, I think, we just approved that huge building on Riverside Drive, so going for, I mean, it's a big building, and it's a lot of stories, so going forward, I think we need to be careful after this one, if we vote for this one, and, you know, but it is a great spot for that building. Northlake and I-95, the whole thing is going to become a beautification project, and once 95 is done, and since I chair the Northlake Boulevard Task Force, I think we have 50,000, 60,000 in a fund that's going to be contributed to the landscaping that the state's not going to do. They're going to throw down five feet of grass and be done with it. So, we're keeping that money in a fund, which none of us will be here probably after 95 is done, but at least that money's there for now to enhance that area. So, this building, as nice as it's going to be, it will also be enhanced by what the state's going to do, so.
Question unrelated, when is the NBOZ going to meet again, or do they ever meet again, or is there any ever discussion to have them to meet again?
No, at the last meeting, the, actually, the task force discussed whether they should let the inter-local expire or not. There was consensus that the inter-local should survive, but they should meet on an as-needed basis, so there's no scheduled meeting at this point in time that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Am I hearing no further discussion?
Just one comment.
Go ahead.
You know, when we were, when, and Natalie, kudos to you when you were working with FDOT on this interchange, because it was an abomination at the first attempt, and one of the main concerns was what was going to be the taking of land? And with this parcel, the way it fits, and with the fact that the retention pond is going to be behind you, and there's not taking of land that's going to put people out of their homes, this really is an ideal use for that space, so I'm in favor.
The amount of arguing that you and I did when we first were on council to the DOT meetings, when they wanted to do the flyovers and do eminent domain all the way down to Santry was ridiculous. We thought our hands were tied, but we went to every DOT meeting and went, what?
And we kept saying, you know, if you take all this land, you're going to take, and take all these businesses and put them out of business, you're not going to need to worry about Northlake Boulevard, there won't be anybody traveling on it.
There won't be any traffic on it. Okay, no more discussion, y'all, right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Rochelle, any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will now have the second reading of ordinance 6, 2020, request to rezone and establish PUD with a major conditional use approval. Patty, would you please read the title?
This is on for first reading as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Ordinance 6, 2020, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of one parcel totaling 1.66 acres in size, located on the northeast intersection of Interstate 95 and Northlake Boulevard, to be known as the Garden Self-Storage Plan Unit Development PUD. Providing that this parcel of real property is more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city's zoning designation of Plan Unit Development PUD overlay with an underlying zoning designation of General Commercial CG1, providing that the zoning map of the city Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a Conflicts Clause, Severability Clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Right on. It's still a quasi-judicial vote, just for a matter of procedure, and so Max doesn't say anything. Is there any expertise on this?
Yes, today spoke with John Channing and Natalie Crowley regarding the storage unit specifically.
I spoke with John Channing as well. Maria?
Spoke with John Channing today.
Chelsea?
Dan?
Rochelle?
John Channing and Dana.
Open the public hearing. We've already had a presentation on this ordinance. I have no comment cards. I will close the public hearing. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 6, 2020 on first reading.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second your motion.
Okay, bring it back for discussion for us five. No further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Let me get organized real quick. Where am I at, Patty? Oh, I got it. Okay, we're on Resolution 35. Site Plan Number Three, approval to allow the development of 390 single-family dwelling units. Patty, would you please read the title?
Resolution 35, 2020, a resolution of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan for 390 single-family homes in three residential pods, Pod 6, Pod 7, and Pod 8, comprising 152.55 acres more or less, within the residential parcel, Parcel A, in the Avenir Plan Community Development PCD, that is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Grapefruit Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date and further purposes.
All right, is there any expertise regarding this matter? I have none.
Yes, I spoke with Rosa Schacter last week regarding the homes. I spoke with Ken Tuma today regarding drainage, and Natalie as well, asking some questions about the project.
Okay, Maria?
Nope.
Chelsea? Or, I'm sorry, Chelsea, pause. Rochelle?
In April, I did a site visit to Avenir. This project specifically was not discussed, it was just pointed out where the site would be for Site Plan Three, so.
Okay. So, other than Rosa, nobody?
Uh-uh.
Chelsea? Any expertise on this matter, on Resolution 35, 3030?
No.
No, okay. I don't have any comments cards on this. Can we have your presentation, please?
Good evening.
The abbreviated version.
We know you two well good.
Good evening, Ken Tum with Urban Design Studio.
Ken, just let me open the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Now, okay, public hearing's open, and now we can do the presentation. I don't like this thing. Ken, can I have a presentation, please?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Ken Tum with Urban Design Studio. My address is 610 Clematis Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33418. I have been sworn in, Mr. Mayor. Thank you this evening. Here tonight on behalf of Avenir and the Landstar Development Group, the project that is coming before you tonight is the third site plan. It's a total of 390 residential units that will be coming to the city, hopefully, if your approval this evening. The units will be very similar to what you've seen in Site Plan One and Site Plan Two, but there are some differences. As we go through the project, as I go through the slides, I'll show you and identify those differences, but we look forward to showing you this, this evening, this project. Uh-oh. Maybe use the page-down key or something? Maybe I'll just do it with the mouse. Oh, you know what? We're at the end is the problem. Sorry, some technical difficulties, we'll be right in a second. I want to make sure you get the full 45 slides in this evening. So, the site plan in front of you is the Avenir PCD, which you approved back in 2016. The item in front of you tonight is Site Plan Number Three, blown up on the screen in front of you. It consists of three parcels of land, Parcel 7, 8, and 6. There is a connector road in between the middle. The lot sizes on these proposed, on this proposed parcel are 70-foot wide lots by 130 feet, and 50-foot wide lots 130 feet deep, consistent with what you've, which you've seen on other site plans in Avenir. Just a couple of quick updates on Avenir, because a lot's going on out there, and you get the chance to drive by on Northlake Boulevard, but you don't get the chance to go way in the back and see what's happening. So, first thing, a couple of slides. First, you've approved Site Plan One already. The entry features are well under construction here. Toll Brothers is well underway building homes. In fact, there's a couple of lots that are sold or under contract on the north side. There's a lot of very happy people about that. KenCo is busy building here. The clubhouse, the contract has been light, has been let and is, and is started construction. Cass Construction is building that. The oval bout is complete. Parcel Number Two, K Hobnium has closed on lots on Parcel Two, and Toll Brothers is beginning construction on Parcel Three. So, a lot happening in Site Plan Number One. Site Plan Number Two, you will see shortly for residential lot approval. Toll Brothers has closed on that parcel, it's for 469 age-restricted homes. The clubhouse, as I said earlier, is started construction, the contract has been let. The entry features, this is the slide I showed you a couple of years ago about what it's going to look like, and here's what it actually looks like. The entry features have been made out of Ulaid Stone, the copper roofs have been constructed. You can see the landscaping heading in. These pictures are several weeks old, if you get the chance to take a drive out there, a lot of landscaping and bougainvillea have been installed, it really looks beautiful. Here's a view of the entrance, and this is the oval bout here, and this is the spine road as you pull into the community. You could start seeing the walls and the landscaping develop. It's not done in these pictures, there's a long ways to go, but it shows kind of the quality and what's happening within the project. The clubhouse under construction, though, out in the back in the conservation area, you can't see this driving by, but Mr. Weinberg, who I believe is on the phone, or I'm probably on the screen up there, has done a lot of work on the conservation area. Left-hand side of your screen, you can see what, what one of the areas looks like when the water has been made right. You can see it's a nice little wetland area. The bottom left is a pair, is an area where it's been dried out, and the upper right is the pine flat, the pine flatwood forest. There are paths constructed that are out there, it's really exciting, if you get the chance to head out that way, it's really neat, and I bet Ed would probably give you a tour. So, Site Plan Number Three, the reason why we're here this evening, is in front of you now, Site Plan Number Three is located here, where the red circle is. It's adjacent to the conservation area to the north, it's also adjacent to Toll Brothers' Parcel Five, and when we get to the details, I'll show you the treatment that we're doing between those two. Also, an important thing to note on this slide is a significant amount of water, as a stormwater management or a lake track between these areas, because it's an important part and a functional part of the drainage system. This is a blow-up of the site plan in more detail. To the north here are 47 lots, or 75, or 70 feet wide by 130 feet deep. These are 70-foot wide lots by 130 feet deep, and these lots over here, 245 or 50 by 130 feet deep. There's a spine road that bisects as you pull into the community. It is a gated community, you'll pull into the community, and then you'll note these bridges, or land bridges here, which I'll go into detail in a little bit later, as they go over the water management track. It's, sometimes you forget kind of long vistas in Avenir, but these are very long and large lakes and have some really significant views. The lot sizes, as I said a little bit before, the landscaping, a very significant amount of landscaping points, and open space well above your code. This is the spine road, or Coconut Drive, pulling into the community, so there is, Coconut Drive is the north-south road. On the right-hand side, where my mouse is, those are the locations of the lots that are adjacent to Coconut Drive. Similar condition to what has occurred both in Site Plans One and Two. You'll note that there is a wall, a six-foot-high wall in the rear of all these lots. Then there's a 15-foot landscape buffer. That landscape buffer has a mix of oak trees, palm trees, and understory throughout, and then there's the 40-foot buffer that goes to the road right of way. Within that 40-foot buffer, there is a sidewalk, it's an eight-foot sidewalk on one side, and a 12-foot sidewalk on the other, and that's on purpose, because it creates connections throughout the entire community, both to the clubhouse, to Northlake Boulevard, to get to the conservation area. Those two connection points are the key thing that pull together Avenir, and this is future Coconut Drive, Coconut Drive, which will eventually get to the Beeline Highway all the way to the north, and you can see through the section how the landscaping and the streetlights will be consistent with what's already been approved in Avenir. Now, as you pull in, now to get to some pictures, as you pull in and you're pulling up, heading north on Coconut Drive, you'll see the entry feature. There's a right turn lane here as you pull into the community to create some additional stacking. You'll then see this entry monument here. It's a little bit lower scale than some of the other entry monuments that you've seen come in Avenir. This one is approximately 38 feet in length. This one is approximately 38 feet in length. It has a trellis feature on it and water feature in the front. It will have that consistent theme of Ullate stone, as all the entry features will be required to have in Avenir from the ownership. You'll notice the bismarcks as they start marching down the street. You can see the large oak trees in the background. And then here in the background, you can start seeing the gated community. So, it is a gated community. There's one set of gates at the entry. And this is a better view of the entry feature. And it's said a little earlier, 38 feet, the water feature here, there are fountains. And then there's also water coming outside of the wall and then the trellis feature, the gate system, the pots on top of the gate system, and the trellis features. Here's another view as you're driving a little further down, getting closer to that gate, so you get an idea of what it's going to look like as you pull in in the detail that's been paid to the entrance. You can see the columns and the fencing system, the gate where you walk into the community, the bismarcks as you drive down, the oak trees. There's what, there's actually a wall in the rear of these lots that you can't see because of the landscaping, the understory. The idea of that wall is to block the view of the homes, so the homes have protection in the back. This is the main road, the spine road past the gate. This is the gate as you pull in. You drive all the way through the project into Parcel Six. You terminate on the mail kiosks and also one of the play areas in Parcel Six. It is a two-lane road, so it is a standard residential road. It's not a four-lane road section. It's a two-lane road section. And the character of that road's important, because it allows for slow traffic. It allows for a sense of community in that area. As you drive down that road, you'll note that there's special paver treatments as you pull into this intersection. You have a choice of going into Parcel Seven or a choice to go to Parcel Eight. And then you'll come across this land bridge. And I'll go into more details about that, but an important stormwater management element. And then also you terminate within the Parcel Six. And this is a section view. You'll see the streetlights here, the oak trees, the palm trees as they line up going down the side. Site Plan Number Three, this is Parcel Number Seven. As you pull into the community, you stop at the gate. You get into the gate. You come and you take a left into the community. And as you come into the community, you'll see these 70-foot by 130-foot deep lots. You'll note in these situations where the lots are back-to-back, there's a significant landscape buffer separating the two. There's on-street parking spread throughout the community. There are tot lots throughout the community. On this particular area, there's also an access point to the preserve, an access point to the exterior sidewalk, which ultimately will get to the preserve area to the north. So, this will be a gated entry through the wall. And then this large lake with fountains identified by the white, dropped by the white areas. Within some of the common areas, you'll see the play equipment identified here on the right-hand side and the play equipment, which is a shaded play structure. There's street trees associated with this pod. The street tree will be a southern live oak tree throughout this area. There are entry features, a small entry feature as the main entry feature into the community is the main entry. You'll notice in the entry here are majules coming down the center as a very important look. And then on both sides are the alexanders to create that landscape buffer on both sides and then create that nice view as you come through the special treatment of pavers. That will, that's the Avenir Mixes Special Treatment of Paver. And then you can see how it terminates here on the majules. The signs, again, will be Ullate, small in scale, six feet by 12 feet of width, or 12 feet of width. They will be consistent with your city regulations for all the signage and all the materials associated with it. Site Plan Number Eight is a mirror of Site Plan Seven, a few more lots and also some unique connection points through it. It, this site is 70 feet wide, 130 deep, has an entry. And then it has this walkway or connection point through the entire site, coming out all the way to the south here in the bottom right-hand side. And then it connects to the second land bridge here to create a connection between these two parcels. The entry features, the, here's a blow-up of that center area and the landscaping in detail behind it. The, the street tree here will be the southern oak. The play equipment, there'll be significant play equipment in this area. The entry feature will mirror the entry feature to the north. There will be majule palms down the center with alexanders on the side, and then a significant amount of oaks, sable palms on both sides of the entry feature to create that look as you pull into the community. It will also have the six-by-12 sign with the Ullate stone. Site Plan Number, the third parcel, Pod Six, this parcel's 245 lots. A little bit different, the lots are smaller. Still consistent with what you approved in Parcel, gosh, Parcel Three, I think, in Site Plan Number One. These are 50-foot lots by 130 feet deep. You pull into the community, you have a pull-off for the mail kiosks immediately, so you have that opportunity to stop as you're on your way home to pick up your mail. And you have, then you have special paving details throughout the community at all the key intersections. The idea for those key intersections is to slow up traffic and also to give your eyes some different look as you go around the curvature of the road, or in some places, the road being a little bit straight. And then we have two entries, two important features from a walkability standpoint. As you walk into the parcel, you walk all the way through. And here, if you could see my mouse, you have access to the preserve area directly from that area and then also from this area. So, you'll have access to those walking trails I showed you a little bit earlier directly from your parcel or from your, from where you live. Play equipment spread throughout the community, shaded play structures. In this area, the street tree will be different. It will be the East Palaca Holly. There'll be, there'll be an entry feature sign consistent with the other three, made out of the Ullate stone. The entry sequence is a little bit different here from a landscape perspective. There'll be majule palms in the middle, but there'll be floor, there'll be royal palms on both sides that create a little bit different look than what occurred on the other two entries. Sorry, excuse me. So, one of the things that was really important for both our client, the potential buyers, the staff, is how do we make the separation between this proposed project on the left-hand side and the already-approved Toll Brother project for the age-restricted community? Working with your staff, we came up with a buffering system and a fairly significant buffer with wall, landscaping, and trees. Very heavy, heavily tree, 12 to 18-foot high. Clear trunk of sable trees or saw palmettos on understory. So, on the right-hand side is the Toll Brother project. On the left-hand side is what you're approving today. There's also, there's also a four-foot-high decorative fence at the rear of each lot. So, those lots back up and there's a four-foot-high decorative fence. The purpose of that fence is to separate where the property owner lives, their lot, versus the common area, so they don't spill their play equipment out into that area. And that reminds me of one more thing that separates this project from the other two parcels that you reviewed. One of the decisions that was made in this project is that we're actually, we'll be constructing an aluminum fence, the four-foot-high aluminum fence on the back of all the lots. So, as the homes are being built, instead of where it's optional, there'll be a four-foot-high aluminum fence on the rear of the lots. The thought process behind that is to create some consistent look. Instead of having some lots that don't have a fence and some lots that do, in this case, as they're building the house on the lakes, they will be a four-foot-high fence in the back. Oopsie. So, here's Site Plan Number Three, and we'll have a couple of access points to the conservation area here to the north and also over here. It's a three, this area happens to be called Basin N2 in particular, but it's approximately 300 area, area that is almost complete. Mr. Weinberg will probably tell you that it is complete. This is a blow-up of that area. And you don't get the opportunity to see this, but this is the trail system as proposed and constructed. The lines in red are the pasture trail. The lines in green are the oak trail that goes through the forested areas. It's a very neat area that's come together very well. And each one of these arrows identify different connection points that come from the residential communities. Down here on the right-hand side, that's actually the Toll Brother community entry points. This is the Parcel Six entry points, and there'll be a future connection point here as Avenir Road, as Coconut Road gets constructed. Here's a view again of what it looks like in different areas. This is what a section looks like adjacent to the conservation area. So, if you live on that conservation area, here's what it looks like. You'll have a slope down to the conservation area. The different areas, there'll be palm, there'll be hammocks of sables. There could be open prairies. There's a six-foot-high fence here to create that separation. And then there's the slope and fire break in the rear. And that was part of the original approval, and then the homes identified on the left-hand side. The land bridges, so stormwater management, lakes, an important part of Avenir. One of the key things here are, how do you make those connections and make sense? Because you have to move a lot of water through these connection points. Our client, I give our client, and I know they're on the phone, a lot of credit. Instead of allowing us to, instead of doing a standard roadway with a culvert, they said, "Why don't we do something nice and make it a very special spot?" The idea here is to make it a gathering spot for pedestrians instead of just a roadway with two, with box culvert underneath of it. So, spent a lot of time and a lot of their money building something like this. So, this is actually really a neat thing, and I'm happy to show it to you. I'm going to walk you through it in detail. It's a, it is a, it is a land bridge. It's not a bridge. There's culverts underneath it, but it's a land bridge. But as you can see in the middle of the screen, is the regular roadway that goes back to Parcel Six. It's a two-lane roadway, standard roadway with specialty pavers in the middle, with specialty pavers in the middle. But then as you get out, you'll see this 60-foot area between here and this Ullate step. That 60-foot area is intended to be, is intended to be a pedestrian gathering area. You can see benches, trees planted in planters, the large gumbo limbos in the foreground and the oaks in the background. Then you'll notice a seating area made out of Ullate. It's actually a retaining wall, but it'll be made out of Ullate with the intent of, so people could sit on it. That's the intent of it. Then you can see the litoral shelf planted. Now, I didn't go through in the rest of the community. There are a lot of green items, for example, there's red maple trees. There's also cypress trees planted around all of the lakes going into Avenir as part of litoral planting. So, there's a significant amount of wetland plants throughout the area. And it's also mirrored on the other side, so you still have this 60-foot area on the other side. And as I said a little earlier, this is a very long view down. So, it's going to be a really nice place for people to gather within their community. This is a gated community. It's their, it's their gathering area. There are two of these, but let me bring it down a little bit to give you a little bit better scale of what's occurring here. This is kind of bringing the camera lens down a little bit. You can see the long vista. Here's the brick paver area, the gumbos, the oak trees. You can see some of the homes. Though, the homes are not in for approval tonight. Those will come in as a separate approval down the road. But we've just put a couple of houses there so you can get an idea of scale. And here's another view of it at a little lower scale of what's occurring. And there are two of these. This is actually from the second bridge. Connections are a very important part of Avenir, how we make connections between all the important areas. On the right-hand side of the screen, you'll see the eight, the eight-foot sidewalk. On the left-hand side of the screen are the 12-foot sidewalk. That's the key pedestrian, the key pedestrian bicycle connection. There's also a bike path on both sides of the road. So, throughout Avenir, throughout all of this major roads will be this connection point. Vehicular connections into this particular parcel, so you can see it as you enter into the community. This is the main entering point. You then can ingress and egress into Parcel Seven and Eight, and then here to Parcel Six. There's also the secondary bridge, which connects Parcel Six and Parcel Seven, or excuse me, Parcel Six and Parcel Eight together. And then finally, there is a right out and an emergency ingress here in the bottom left-hand side of the screen. So, that's a vehicular connection. The pedestrian connections, the scale of Avenir really always surprises me. In front of you on the screen is six miles of sidewalk. Those large connections, those large whiffs of sidewalk on both sides. The pedestrian ingress-egress points identified. You have a pedestrian connection here to allow you to go to the northern part. You have a pedestrian connection over here, a pedestrian connection over here that lets you get into the conservation area, and then all the other walking paths. This is, in regards to stacking, kind of the more technical part of the presentation. We meet all the city's requirement for stacking. We're providing a right turn lane into the community. It's an entry feature. It is a virtual gate. There is not a gatehouse. It is a virtual gate, and that's kind of the newer thing where you actually pull up to, like what we're doing tonight, we're Skyping. You actually Skype the guard, and the guard lets you in. So, just a little bit different approach here. Drainage, lot drainage. The lot drainage in this community will be, there'll be three types of drainage. One will bring the drainage to the front. If you're adjacent to a lake, the lot will split. The drainage will go to the back. We do have one waiver request this evening that is in front of you. That one waiver, consistent with what you've approved in Parcel One and Two, is a waiver for, to allow for a reduction in the setback for mechanical equipment. If you put the mechanical equipment, all the mechanical equipment, the pool, the AC, all on one side, our request is for you to reduce the required setbacks, so it's all on one side. And therefore, we would keep the other side completely clear, so you have the opportunity to get to your backyard, of course, except for landscaping, because we always have to have landscaping on both sides. I have one more slide here I'd like to get to at the end. At least I think I do. Oh, no, maybe I don't. Okay, so I have one more, I don't know how to do this, but I have one more board that I'd like to show you about drainage in the overall project. It's updated? What's that? I'm sorry. Talk, I can't do that. Thank you. Oh, so they're going to load it up on a different presentation, but I want to talk a little bit about drainage in the overall community. I know questions come up. I know Councilmember Marciano asked a question about that, and I want to just take a minute and walk through it with you. I know our civil engineer's on the phone in his office this evening if we need to get him. If the slide comes up, I'll do it. If not, I'll do it in the, hmm, that's not it. It's, it would be all the way at the end. Okay, so anyhow, I'm going to just show you something here real quick, and then I'll talk through it. This is the drainage plan for Avenir east of the, east of the entry road. A little closer? How am I doing? Closer? No? Okay, anyhow, I have a board in front of me. On this board identifies the drainage within Avenir. This board shows east of Coconut Drive, which is this road right here.
There you go. Yeah, without the screen is good.
Hey, thank you.
Rochelle, can you see it?
This is really odd. Okay, so, the area, the dark areas on the screen on this board are 112 acres of lakes on the east side. So, and they are constructed today. All those lakes are completely constructed. If I need to turn it around to show it to sir, I'm happy to show it to everybody. All those lakes are completely constructed today. There is an existing South Florida Water Management District permit. That existing South Florida Water Management District allows for the construction of all those lakes. And then right here where my finger is, is a, is a control structure. That control structure is called N2A something Control Structure. That control structure allows for these lakes in a, in a significant event to have water discharge into this area. That's how our South Florida Water Management District permit works today. In the future, there will be a stormwater pump station, which the city has, which the city has granted an administrative amendment for already. It's already been approved. It's already been bid. That is in the future, when Avenir moves on to future phases to begin construction on that. So, that's kind of how the stormwater management system works within the community today. And Mr. Belvey is available if we have any other questions. It is fully permitted through South Florida Water Management District in that two-step process that I identified a little bit earlier. And with that, happy to answer any questions you may have about Avenir that I can answer.
All right, we're going to pause for a second, because I had a procedure.
We're going to pause for a second because I had a procedure, procedure question for the, I guess now the city attorney. So just hang on one second, Ken.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Clean up my bag.
So Ken, just stand by one second. Patty, I'm going to confirm that we do not have any comment cards on this issue.
That's correct.
Okay, if no, then I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
I make a motion, we approve. Okay, let me turn pages. Nope, there we go. Motion in a second.
Okay, now we're going to bring it back for discussion, Ken. So I'm, you know, I'm still kind of new at this, so I'm just making sure I'm following the proper procedure. So now we'll bring it back to, for discussion and engage Ken. So we're not having a second discussion when we've already had it. That was my question, and we did it wrong the last time. So, thank you, Ken, for your patience.
So sit down?
No, you're up. We have, if, if we, if we had had public comment, they would have came up after you.
I understand, yes, sir.
Blah, blah, blah. So Chelsea, want to start with you? You have any questions, comments?
I mean, no, I've, I've asked kind of all these questions on zoning for a while now. So I think it's great. I do love the land bridge, though. That's a great way to move water and give residents more sidewalk, which is always a good thing.
I know Rosa's listening, and you should, that's all Rosa's, Rosa and her team's desire.
Good job, Rosa. And yeah, and pedestrian access to the preserve is wonderful as well, and there's a lot of it. So I'm really pleased with that.
Rochelle?
No, with, with each new pod that comes on board, I think you can't outdo the one before, and each one just seems to get more distinctive and
Sounds like a challenge.
prettier than the last. After having been out there and seeing the oolite stone and how the artisans actually break it up and, and fit it together, it's such a beautiful addition to everything. And placing it on those land bridges is really going to be awesome. The only question I had for Ken had to do with the waiver and, and putting the, all the machinery on, on one side of the structure. That would be consistent, same side for all of the structures. So if it's on the right side of, of the house, it's going to be on the right side of the house on all of them, so that your, your structure's not backing up to somebody else's structure. Correct?
I make sure I understand the question. So is, is the question if the, the way it works, the, the equipment would be on one side of the house? And I think what you're asking, is there a possibility that it could be on one house and then on the other house on the same lot line, I think is what you're asking?
Yes.
And the answer is yes. It could be in certain situations. It won't happen often, but there are times when there are easements or when the, or when the driveway changes where that happens. But it's not, it's definitely not the intent, and the majority of the homes will not do that. But I can't say 100% that it might not occur in a few lots, particularly when driveways change sides.
So on those lots, there would be no way to get to the back of the house on that side, whereas if it wasn't back-to-back, you're kind of on your neighbor's property, but you can get around the
Right. Well, the idea, and the, the idea behind it, Councilwoman, is that one side will, will always be clear. So the other side, no matter if it, if it's on both sides, the other side of the home will be clear. So they'll have that five-foot run on both sides. But it'll be a very, it'll be a very, I, I can't tell you that it'll never happen because there will be times when lots will, where the equipment will end up. But the intent and the majority of them will be all on one side, depending on where the driveways end up.
I'm, I'm, I'd like to jump in because I, I want to make it abundantly clear that the, the intent of this condition of approval and the sole justification from staff's perspective on this waiver is to maintain free and clear access. So most definitely, from our permitting standpoint, we look at this issue heavily, and we want to make sure that all the equipment is lined up either on the right or on the left. Yes, I agree with Ken that there may be a situation where if you have another means of access, so if you're immediately adjacent to a, a drainage easement, as one example, we are willing to look at that, but we will not sign off on permit unless you have free and clear access on one side for five feet minimum. So that's the condition of this waiver, and that is a condition of approval in this resolution.
Okay. Is there parking at the park areas, or are they walk-in only to the playgrounds and parks?
There, there is scattered, I don't have the, the thing up, but there are scattered on-street parking throughout the community, and they were kind of hard to see at that scale. And several of those areas have on-street parking close and adjacent to them, while some are walking, with all specifically walking. So it's a mix.
What is, do you know offhand what, what the farthest distance is for houses, say, at the front to their closest part, like, like park? Like what would a walking distance be? It's hard to tell on there. It looks like it's a really far walk.
Oh, to the parks, no, actually, within the requirements within Avenue in the back, within the back of your, within the back, on the last page of the site plan, there's actually a drawing that shows the radiuses. We're required to have a park within a quarter mile of every home.
Okay. All right, so that would be the maximum. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle. Mark, how, any questions?
Yeah, it's funny how when you think you have all the answers until you watch the presentation, and you wait, wait, what about that? So you mentioned gates behind all the homes up, abutting the lakes.
Yes, sir.
Was there going to be gates to get through that? So if you have a property and you live in the home, if you wanted to get past that to play with the alligators or something, can you?
Well, so, good question, and you know, it's a, it's a, it's a good discussion point to have, but the intent right now is that that is a common area. So the, the, the property owner association wants to separate that area from the residents. Now, will some residents potentially have gates in the future? That could happen, but that's not the builder's intent. Builder's intent is to have a solid fence all the way down that back of lot.
Okay. The conservation area, the pathways, if you don't live in an area where you can access it, say I live in PGA National, and I want to go take a walk out in the path because I want to see, is there a way for a non-resident to get to those pathways without running through someone's backyard?
For, not, not accessing it through site plan number six, there is not a way. But there will be access when Avenue, when Coconut Road goes through, there'll be access on both sides. The pathway network will come under, there's an elevated bridge, and the pathway network will come underneath that. So when the road gets extended to the north, you will have access. And also on Coconut, where it goes north, there's an access, a public access point also. So the, the public does have access to that area.
You'll be able to park, there'll be parking somewhere to park your car, or?
When we come in with the next phase of, of Coconut, when we come on the next phase, I'm getting the road names mixed up with Coconut, there hopefully, there hopefully will be some locations for parking for access. That's our intent.
So if you want to go out there and park and take a walk or bike ride or something through the paths, you, you should be able to do so. Within the community itself, there's enough parking, on-road parking, because each, each lot, I assume, has just two cars available to park in the driveway plus a two-car garage. So parking on the street will be enough for people.
So, and it's a good point. The, what you have in front of you today is only the horizontal plane for the approval. So coming before you in the future, and they've been submitted, will be the architectural renderings and the architectural approvals. That's where the bedroom counts come in and your requirements to meet the required parking in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. That required parking is one parking spot per bedroom. Typically, we see two parking spots within the garage and two within the driveway for a four-bedroom house. At this point in time, though, that's not an item that is before you as we wait to those architectural elements come in. And they have been submitted, and our client, the client who is under contract to buy this is redoing them and preparing to resubmit. So that will come before you in a separate application. It's a long-winded answer to your question, sir.
No, it's fine. And thanks for answering the questions earlier about the drainage. I mean, I understand there's going to be a future south-north flow of water, but my question earlier, just to clarify, was that the homes are going to be built at the beginning. The full drainage pattern and the pump station may not be fully built, but because there's going to be plenty of space surrounding the first set of homes, they're not going to be at risk of flooding should we get some crazy hurricane on top of all the rain that we've had.
That's correct. That's what the South Florida Water Management District permit has been issued, and it's under construction under that pretext.
Thank you.
Great question. Maria?
Okay, the four-foot aluminum fence, color?
I'm sorry?
The color of the
Black, black aluminum.
Okay, perfect. And the connection, the, the connection of the spine road to Beeline? I know that there's a benchmark of a thousand, is it a thousand COs before that has to be put in?
It's the first trip threshold, so it, it's, 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 it's all based on trips. So I, I can't tell you offhand how many homes that is, but yeah, it, it's about a thousand, if my recollection serves me correctly.
And do we have any updates? Since you, I, I wouldn't have brought it up, but you brought up the, the spine road. So do we have any update on the, the railroad crossing and whether they've been successful in being able to move it?
We're still continuing down the permit path.
Okay. And let's see. That would be it. I'm done. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The luxury of going last is that all your questions were answered. So you guys had really good questions tonight on this, because I think every one of you had, I had three or four questions, but I don't now. So I'm going to go on, hearing no further discussion, all agree with that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five zero. Thank you, Ken, for your short version on that project.
It's only an hour.
Okay, so we're now at items for council action, discussion, and items of interest.
Do we have any resolutions? Or is it?
Did I miss something?
Resolutions. Do we have any? Item nine.
Resolutions for subjects under resolution?
No, there are no resolutions.
No, we're, we're good. So again, so we are going to be at item, items for council action, discussion, and items of interest. So Mark, you brought up the, the workforce before this council last month. Did you want to discuss that on, regarding like, you sent an email to Dave?
Yeah, I, City Manager Patty, if you have any update? I have not spoken to Dave Marcarion. He had shown interest. Did he actually pursue the application, Patty? Do you know?
No, he did not. I actually sent that to him on May 28th, and I sent him a link to the application as well as the link to the career source, so he could look at the meetings and the minutes and things of that nature, but I've not heard anything back.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to him. That was my, my ball that I dropped there, and I apologize, but I do want to follow up with him on that because I think he'd be a good addition to that board.
Mark, all, go ahead and continue with discussion or anything you want to bring up or
Yeah, there is something
any report or whatever you want to do at this point.
There is something I do want to bring up. I mean, as far as meetings and stuff like that, I think, well, the best meeting I had was today. We have some students from Palm Beach State College that invited me on a Zoom call to kind of just reconnect and talk a little bit about the, the future of the education at this, at the college, and just some general questions about, you know, what it means to sit up here. And, you know, some of you guys are graduating Palm Beach State and moving on to bigger and better things, or at least bigger things, I know they're better, but, so congratulations, and thank you guys for staying engaged. And one of the things that we had talked about was this past student government leadership was really good about engaging the city and the council. The challenge is, is you guys are only there for two years, and then you go, and really you're in a leadership position for one year. So the challenge I put on them was to make sure that as you become your first year in leadership in student government, to start recruiting the next wave of leaders so that we all contain, continue the conversations and the momentum doesn't die as soon as you guys move on to something else and as soon as we leave. So I think that's something that you guys took to heart, and I appreciate that because the state college is a, is an important partner with us here in the city, and we want to make sure that those relationships stay strong. So thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for engaging. I did have another comment, and, and I did want to bring something up to council since we're all here and we're allowed to talk about it in the public view. We all received a letter of resignation from, from our friend Maria to the council, and we knew it was coming, but now it's official. So we wish you all the best. I think I speak for everyone, and we wish you all the best in your endeavor with County Commission. Now that we have an official letter of resignation and an official date of resignation, what is the next process? Max, if you can kind of give us a little bit of what we need to prepare for, knowing that, well, I'll let you, if you could please give us the, the official word on what, what we have to do to prepare for Maria's resignation or departure.
Sure, certainly. Under, under our charter, you could, you can leave the seat vacant until the March election. You could appoint someone to serve. If they serve, they will serve until we have a special election. It'll be a special election for us, but it's a, it's a municipal election. It's the next available municipal election, which will be 2021 in March. So if you appointed somebody, her last day is October 2nd. She will leave office on October 2nd, and you could appoint somebody to serve the remainder of that term from that resignation date until March. So it'd be roughly four and a half months, five months. And then there would be an election in March for someone to fill the remainder of her term at that point, which would be the remaining year.
So Maria will be on our October 1st council meeting, so October 2nd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're looking, so that'll be a decision that we'll, we can make. But in terms of, how, how do we approach the necessity for an election? When does that start happening? When do we post that information? Do we have to have a resolution that we, we pass here, or does it just auto, or is it already going to be happening? And when do candidates, potential candidates want to, if they want to start deciding to run for this seat, since it's already June?
I've not developed, I've not finished the development of the timeline, but it would follow the same as it did last year. Qualifying by petition would come first, and then qualifying by filing fee. So you would know by the end of the year who, what candidates would be running for that seat.
So our dates, the dates for qualification would be the same as if it was last year, so
Yes, yes.
Last end of November. So does that, do we have to pass a resolution or anything? I don't, I don't really know. Do we have to pass a resolution to do that, or is it automatic that it's going to happen?
Well, we would, we would have to contact the super race election and get on that, that ballot, because we don't normally have an election that year. That's a bye year. So we may, if we do, we would do it in November. If you guys don't choose to appoint someone, I mean, either whether you choose to appoint somebody or not, we're having, we would have an election in March.
Right, so.
But I'll, I'll, I will look into that. If there's a necessity for a resolution between us and the SOE, then we would put it on in November. I don't believe there will be.
I don't believe there is.
Okay. The reason I say it is, you know, I was just thinking, we just went through elections, and, you know, I was the last person outside of Chelsea, of course, to open up a campaign, and that was in April, so we're already in June. So, you know, campaigns are tricky things, and people need time to prepare. So whoever's thinking about, in the community that's thinking about running for that seat in March of 2021 must have the time to, to prepare. So that's why I asked the question.
It'll be very similar to what happened when Councilmember Barnett resigned. She resigned in July of the year that she resigned, and we weren't going to have an election until March. We couldn't get on the August primary, obviously, because the resignation was in early July. And we were able to get on in November, and that's when Councilmember Tinsley was elected. She was elected in November, and then she had to turn right around and run for election in March. So it was, you know, it was a compressed time schedule, but it, it is doable, but it's, it's pretty quick. People have to get out there and, and really hustle.
So do we, we don't have to have any discussion about March of 2021? That's going to be automatic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if anybody wants to open up an account, they can do that at any time? Is that right?
They can open up a campaign account at any time.
Yep. Now that the resignation letter has been submitted, um, and there's, and they definitely know that there will be a vacancy, they can open up a campaign.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Rochelle, do you have anything for, um, item of interest or discussion?
Um, yes, I do. Let me, uh, yeah. I have a couple of things. I'll start with, uh, an, an easy one first. I got another phone call this morning from a resident about, uh, the traffic situation at San Hill Crane and Bay Hill. Can Ron give us a real quick update on what the status of that traffic light is and where we are?
Nothing has changed. The light is not warranted and I don't know if or when the county has done an additional traffic study, but there will be a communications between the NCNC, uh, Spray Isles, the county and the city. Sometime this, this month. I don't remember the date, but our engineer will be involved in that. We'll get updates from the county at that point.
Okay, I told her to contact the county and make sure that her feelings were, were known to the county administrator on that. I did want to, um, make a, a personal statement about everything that's been going on out in, in the community. And I, during this time of, of pain and anguish for so many people with the threat of the pandemic and economic hardship and racial injustice, it, it weighs particularly heavy on, on me or, or on us, I would expect, as elected officials. My job's to make a positive difference in the lives of the community that I serve. And it doesn't stop there for most of us, extending to the broader community of our county, state and nation as well. There's no room for racial and social injustice in this world and I pledge to do my part to listen and to act to eradicate the hate and inequality that cause it. We will not heal as a nation through silence, uh, but through justice, action and tangible progress towards equality and acceptance in all spheres of our society. So I'm, I'm willing to be involved and, and listen and do what it takes to make the difference that I can make.
Thank you. Um, Chelsea?
Well, I'm, I'll start with, um, echoing Rochelle's sentiment and I did write a quick paragraph or two and I wanna thank our city manager for helping me control my passion for what's going on and put it into clearer words that.
Good word usage.
Yeah, it was, uh, it was a longer day for him, so thank you for taking the time for me. Specific to the racial injustice taking place and what's happening is obviously beyond heartbreaking. And so I wrote that, um, I am in favor of peace. I'm in favor of dialogue. I'm in favor of our community working together for real change, real equality and real progress. Recent events must further strengthen our continued dedication to diversity and inclusion. And I want us to move forward together and offer support as we point our leadership and our light towards social justice and continued equality. All of us, I, I, I hope I can speak for all of us. We are listening, we are learning and we are completely committed to take meaningful action, to create change and work hard to represent my hometown and our residents. I take it quite seriously. So that was the less passionate one. And that's, that's the best I'll share.
You go, anything else?
Um, not, I don't, you don't wanna go through a list of all the meetings that we're still going to, do we?
Oh, I don't want you to, but if you want to.
I think we can skip those.
All right. Usually, I mean, in my feeling, of course, you, we're all equal, so it doesn't really, you know, whatever you feel is important that you need to, to speak or if there's a, um, um, how I like to blend an item of public interest with a meeting is something that would specifically, um, impact the four corners in which we serve.
Without a doubt.
Other than that, going to random meetings are not interesting and they're redundant.
I will tell you what, though. I spent, I don't know, probably twenty, twenty hours this month, maybe a little bit more, uh, working side by side with the Palm Beach Gardens staff, specifically the recreation staff and, um, I've, I, you know, I've started working when I was fourteen. I'm fifty. A lot of jobs. And I've owned companies and, and had staff that were part of our family and this is really a family. These folks did bittersweet work that would start at six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning and it was ninety degrees and we couldn't, you know, the, the ground was sweaty. I mean, we were sweaty. It was amazing. And as the day went on, they got happier. It didn't, I'm looking at Charlotte. Thank you, thank you. Um, great leadership.
She's smiling under that.
You are smiling. And, um, I, I, um, I don't like anything about this pandemic except for the fact that it got, gave me the opportunity to see this team hard at work when it was really tough. And the stories people were hearing, passing out the public's gift cards, got really, really tough. And, um, everybody hung in there and we made a difference. People had groceries that wouldn't have had groceries. And it, they were thankful. And even the one or two not so great folks that came through, it was handled with grace and, and respect. So I really, um, thank you for your time and your dedication and your leadership showed all the way through to every single person the whole time. I'm so proud.
Thank you. Maria Marino?
I wanna echo what, uh, Chelsea and Rochelle said. And the, the unique thing about our city is that we have always led by example. And whenever crisis has happened in our city, we have taken that crisis and turned it into a positive. We have learned from what has happened and it has made us better as a city, as a staff, as a family. So I know that going forward, the same thing will apply here at this time, at this, at this, uh, uncertain time in our, in our future. And also, as Chelsea said, our staff and my gosh, I know, it's, it's a recording for me. We are family. We are family, but, uh, what we've done over the past several months in reaching out to our, our community, our unemployed, our, um, small businesses, we've really set an example and I'm, I'm very pleased that the, the county decided to follow our lead. And the difference between the county's program and our program is that the county is using federal dollars to do their program and the city of Palm Beach Gardens is using our own economic development funds to do it. So as I said, we lead by example and, uh, having said that, I think I will kick off the discussion on the city manager evaluation. Or do you want?
No, you won't. I haven't said mine.
Okay, well then, okay. Go.
Oh, what the hell. Go ahead, go ahead. Do the city manager report.
All right.
I was gonna say something, but it doesn't matter.
Go for it. Go.
No, you guys, you, you guys actually put it all together very well. I mean, as far as what was, what's actually interesting. I mean, I would have mirrored, you know, the, the handing out of the food over and over, the handing out of the gift cards. And then the handing out of the twenty thousand dollar checks. You know, I thought I was, and I appreciate the five oh vote on being mayor, but I thought I was gonna go into this having a little bit more fun than all of this dropping in all of our laps collectively, 'cause we're equal whether, no matter what title you have, other than I'm on the phone with Ron, more than I've ever been on the phone with Ron, sometimes two or three times a day. And, sir? Yeah, well, you, you, you call me usually or whatever. Anyway, um, so, um, anyway. You guys are doing a great job and I appreciate all of you, Rochelle, and I think we are a team and I thought our continuity was separating maybe because of, uh, the isolation maybe a little bit, but, you know, when we're here for a moment in time, you know, it just reiterates how close we are as a council. And it's nice to see Natalie and everybody else and I wish the room was full like it, it used to be, 'cause that's when we really come together.
Yeah, really, we should take one of these cameras and go like this so you can all see that we're social distancing.
Yeah, so, um, I appreciate Patty's time that she spends with me to help, uh, me get through these meetings without slipping all over the place. And having said that, I would like to go into the city manager's evaluation, which, uh, I will obviously lead off with Maria, 'cause she wants to. So there you go.
Well, it is our duty to evaluate our city manager and I'm, I'm actually gonna give us, give you all a little history, 'cause that's what I do. You know, I do my little research and I do a little history. So if you pull up the workshop meeting minutes from September sixth, two thousand and one, I will quote, uh, Mr. Martino, who at one time was mayor. He had expressed concern with the tax increase and concern that the reserve accounts had been depleted. And Mayor Russo indicated the city would try their best to reduce the increase in taxes. At the next meeting, meeting September thirteenth, and remember, I'm saying two thousand and one. Mayor review, so what Mayor Russo had reviewed what had happened in the past under a previous city manager to deplete reserves, indicating that with this proposed budget reserves would be in, would be established at approximately three point four million and by next year would be approximately four million, which was what the city needed. When Ron Ferris took over as city manager, we were one bad decision away from being bankrupt. I have said it before, I will say it again. As of September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, we have twenty-three million dollars in reserves or twenty-four point four percent of our projected expenditures. This is an incredible accomplishment for a gentleman who has been here almost twenty years. But along with, with Ron, um, you know, a city is, is, is as good as everybody that's here. Along with Ron, the staff average tenure of our department heads is over seventeen years. And those department heads have won countless awards for the fabulous jobs they do. And, you know, most of the time that happens because you, you, you will have a leader in Ron Ferris and he's gonna kill me because he hates, he hates all this. Sorry, Ron. But, uh, I was, I also want you to know that we have gotten very good at doing more with less. And in two thousand and seven, we had five hundred and fourteen employees. In two thousand and nine, we had five hundred and thirty-two employees. But what's the difference there? In two thousand and seven, we had forty-nine thousand residents and in two thousand and nineteen, we had fifty-five thousand residents. So basically it was one point oh four percent in tw- two thousand and seven and point nine five percent now. So we truly do more with less and we have more people living in our city. And we are, just completed a year of being, you know, the number one city in the state of Florida by the Chamber of Commerce. So what am I saying here? I am saying that from other city managers around the county, I have heard how much of a leader and a mentor Ron Ferris is to our community and to our county. So my evaluation of Ron Ferris, if you can't tell, is I think you're doing a spectacular job. And not only does he do a spectacular job, he encourages all those people that work with him. And remember, we're a council manager form of government. We are the ones that, that, um, set policy. And our man, our city manager administers that policy and, and takes care of the budget. Our most important thing here to do is our, is to approve the budget, approve policy. And we do it with a city manager who truly has been a long-term resident, as have most of our department heads. Living in our city, so they're not spending just our dollars, they're spending their own dollars. But Ron does it with aplomb and encourages his staff to think outside the box, to make sure that our residents are taken care of. The Economic Recovery Fund is a perfect example of that and by bringing, and partnering, I mean, it, when you have a leader, you have partners. So Ron, I'm giving you a wonderful evaluation and I hope you're not too embarrassed. I'm done.
Rochelle?
Oh, next, okay. Um, I, I agree with Maria. Ron does not like this sort of thing. And, um, he would prefer to just put his head down and, and do his work and then let's get it done. So, um, I did tell him I'm very proud of the great work that, um, he and the staff were able to accomplish during the pandemic. This is a time like no other and, um, it, it would have, have been a lot harder for a lot of other people to do and it was a lot harder. His leadership abilities, uh, you have to respect his relationship with all of our employees and the example that he sets. The relationship that our employees have with each other is because of his leadership. And, and the same for all the department heads who make the city work, uh, in good times and bad. And like Maria said, make us look good. I think the response to both the pandemic and the economic fallout from the pandemic, as well as the, the pain and anguish that's ravaging the community, that his responses are organized, they're targeted and they're appropriate. And, um, in, in all three cases, I think that was the case. And, um, it's a pleasure to work with him and continue to make the city the, the best that it can be.
Thank you. Chelsea?
Well, I'm, I, as you obviously knew to this, and I showed up about three days after COVID introduced itself. So I, um, had a different beginning than I think anyone else got to have in sitting in office. And, uh, Ron's made the transition so much better because I, I love his direct manner. And it's been amazing to watch my city, that I feel so patriotic about, get hit by something so hard. And again, like I've said, regarding our staff during this time, they've sho- they've shown up. Our staff has shown up so beautifully with, with calm and pinpointed, organized help. And that's all because of our leadership, so much so that at the beginning, when he was giving his report, he was thanking us for passing the, uh, the relief fund that your, you and your staff came up with. So the, the honor is mine to pass such beautiful, helpful, impactful things. So, um, a few, what, a couple of months into it, thank you for keeping me informed, for, um, allowing me to express myself and represent our city because I feel like, uh, I've got a lot to learn and you've done a really nice job guiding me so far and I hope it continues. Thank you. So stick around, please.
Mr. Marciano?
Well, I'm a, I'm a results kind of person. I don't worry about the end result. And the means to getting there is, is important, but the result is always the most important thing. And you can't deny the results. Uh, the results show in every angle of this city, um, from the compassion to our residents, small businesses, how your team works with you. And, and I do learn a lot from how this team works, which is important. So the city is, is undoubtedly, uh, where it is because your leadership brought it there. We continue to work on our communications and I am happy that we can share and we can, uh, uh, voice the concerns that we might have. That's constructive. That's what it's supposed to be. And I appreciate your hard work and your efforts and just how well your staff respect you. That's, that's a sign of leadership. And so, well done and we'll just keep working. Thank you.
I'm sure Ron would like for me to forego my evaluation. But I would like you guys to keep this in mind, um, all your words that you've said tonight, 'cause I'm gonna use them against you in another sixty days if I need, if I can. But I don't really care. I'm gonna say this anyway. You know, Ron has become a mentor to me, 'cause none of us get elected and know how to be a council member. You don't grow up saying, "I'm gonna be an elected official," probably not on this level. So whether that's out of turn or whether I should say it as the mayor or not, I really don't care. You know, I lean on Ron to make choices because sometimes the community has their own agenda and they have a tendency to mislead us. And it happened to me many times, twice today alone, a couple of times yesterday, just off of our current events of what's going around the country and in our own community. And then, and, you know, I lean on Ron all year long because he helps me make my choices better for the community in which I serve. So for me being able to go to Ron and help me make a good decision for the community is priceless to me. Not only did Maria and I, when we first got here, it seemed like the council may or may not have been leaning towards parks, but the council took a left and we were doing so much building. It was like, okay, we have all this building, we have these children, we have this community's coming in and avenue and blowing, so on and so on. What are we gonna do with everybody? And it seemed like we kind of abruptly stopped and then we started building parks and then the magic of the grant fund that came in that, I think to this day, we were probably the only one that got the money upfront instead of in increments. And look what we've been able to do in two or two years-ish, um, for our community and that's off of, of, of great vision and great leadership skills that Ron has. So as my friend and my mentor and as your mayor, I appreciate your time and, and everything you do for everybody that lives in this community. Thank you, sir. That brings us to the city. Anybody else want to say any, we can go around this again.
Go for it.
He's uncomfortable, so let's keep doing it.
I'll watch the city attorney's report.
All right. So Max, do you have a report this evening?
Very briefly, Tuesday morning, we were served a lawsuit by the Palm Beach County Tax Collector. She is seeking a declaratory relief and writ of mandamus and pleading equitable stoppall. All of this is over her refusal to properly dedicate a twenty six foot strip of right-of-way of public access along the western border of the property that she proposes to build a new tax collector's office on, that she's known about for well over two years and has refused to take the necessary steps to make it happen. So I have to file an answer, a response to pleading in that by the twenty second. I will do so. If you would like to know what I plan to file, I'm happy to talk to each of you individually about that. I think that their complaint is ill conceived and poorly drafted and I plan to make a point of that when I file my response.
Perfect. Okay. Let's adjourn the meeting, y'all, and I'm going to bang the gavel for Mark.